Right.
Well, the clocks work ahead.
Okay, so we're right here. Thank you everyone, I'll call the council meetings over here. At six P M, um, pledge of allegiance please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
And to the citizens of America. To the pious citizens.
The nation.
Yeah. It's small. Let me see, let's start off.
Your invitation, Mr. Reverend.
Um, uh, dear Lord, uh, please give us knowledge to pass with the ordinances, good to the people of Molleen and the children.
More folks please, Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Messias.
Present.
Azak. Timmyun.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Pascal.
Reverend.
Schmidt.
Present.
We have no electronic attendance, don't believe any questions on the agenda. Directions or adjustments from us as your public comment is in the name. Okay, so we move to our roundtable discussion twenty eight, make sure to twenty twenty six budget and as I have done in the past, just a reminder that, uh, you know, we all like, we, we are all coming at this work from a, a helpful place. We might have different ideas about how to get to where we need to be with this budget, but if you start from that, there's a perspective of an easier conversation. So thank you for your attention. Now turn it over to your honor.
Tonight, we basically have four large open items that we'd like some direction on prior to finalizing budget that we'll try and establish. We're looking for your input, for your priorities. Four main open items are number one, we want to do a quick review of all things in our four in our prime. And as we go through those, you should have a plan of a few schedules. If you want to complete that with you, then you can continue to do them and kind of put on it throughout the night. As we go through the section, I'm going to talk about, um, the impact for that particular duty on our home. And the next item we're going to talk about is our unfunded projects that you know over the last council members that have been here, over the last three to four years, we've talked about projects that we know are on the line again that we're looking for the revenue sourcing. Tonight, I'm going to talk about some viable revenue streams for council to consider. And as we go through those, we're looking for example, to prioritize the projects that will fund sideless revenues. The third one would be just a very quick look back on our carpet allocation. We are going to be submitting third quarter, um, carpet allocation here at the end of October. And so we're looking for direction as part of the budget, a couple of things have been tweaked and then pretty fun to make sure that we have some global approval. That we're submitting that maybe we're wanting it to be submitted. And then the final one will be a review of our campus agencies that we always do a career. And I might just make this special note that this is actually an official budget work session. So as we go through this, if council gives direction to staff, we can, we can have motion and make sure we get those things on the agenda.
Thank you for that. So we move to, and it'd be quite one enterprise fund finances discussion. Who am I turning this to?
Joy. Good evening, your honor. We're going to start off tonight talking about the cities for enterprise funds. These are the individual business units that are intended to be self sustaining and not receiving funds from other areas of the city, but these are we funded by user fees that, um, are received through the utility bill. The, uh, utility bill includes charges for drinking water, uh, storm water, solid waste recycling, and, uh, waste. So, uh, as a reminder, this, uh, this presentation, uh, is, um, based on the presentation that you should be looking at looks kind of like this. So, uh, it should be stapled together. You should all have a copy of it. I'm going to go through those slides. Uh, so the, uh, the, the council passed a minimum cash reserve policy a number of years ago, four or five years ago, and, uh, the, the requirement is that the minimum cash reserve for any of these, any city bond actually, not just the enterprises, needs to be uh, twenty five to thirty percent of the annual budget. So Carol's keeping that in mind as she guides us through uh, the financial discussions, uh, tonight. And then, uh, and then the other thing is that, uh, you know, that the sewer utility uh, was faced with new permit requirements in itself, wastewater treatment plant discharge permit that required it to, uh, have, uh, new limits for phosphorus and meet new limits for phosphorus. And, uh, because of that, um, we presented you with a, uh, facilities planning study result and, uh, it, uh, included, uh, large spending as their wastewater treatment plant that really, uh, prompted a comprehensive analysis of all of the enterprises that. So tonight, this, this presentation is intended just to be a review of the information that's presented this year and the recommendations that are presented this year. We're looking for, as Carol mentioned, the consensus from you all that, um, that you're in agreement with the recommendations that we're providing. And if not, then we would like some feedback from you. Uh, if you are in agreement, then we intend to bring back, um, uh, action items to you, to you and, uh, having council meetings in, and, uh, potentially even a certain institution. Try and get this moving. As Carol mentioned, we have budgets that we need to shore up and we want to try and, we need this information in order to perform the work that we're going to do. So the first utility we're going to talk about is the water pollution control, uh, fund and it's also known as our sewer utility. But the challenges facing that utility, as I mentioned, are the, uh, large uh, scale improvements that are needed for the, uh, south wastewater treatment plant, the projects driven by new limits for nutrients as well as aging equipment. And, uh, I would be more than happy to meet with any of you individually if you, if weren't present when we did the, uh, the planning, uh, study results or, um, you know, any of the financial, uh, the detailed financial study that we did last year, uh, Carol and I would be happy to talk with you. In addition to the challenges at the South Slope, we've also got challenges in the collection system specifically down on the River Drive. We're continuing to have some, uh, overflows during wet weather. And so you'll see some, uh, spending in our capital plan. And so the next slide or next page shows the, uh, the capital spending plan for the sewer utility and it includes, uh, not only plant equipment there on the left, but also vehicles, uh, in the center, our columns, and then also those items that you that we've already approved in the field as part of our capital improvement plan and David Driver presented those items. But we're looking out farther in time and our, the, the model that was presented, uh, last year, it looks out, uh, twenty or more years. This is just a smaller snapshot. Uh, next page shows the, uh, the sources of revenue for the sewer fund. And there's a variety of, uh, customer classes. Uh, we have the, uh, wholesale customers, those, uh, the south wastewater treatment plant is a regional plant. We receive flows from whole valley and East Molleen. And so we have a special lane set up for those customers. Uh, then, uh, the bulk of our customers are residential, uh, commercial, non-straight, commercial or municipal customers, and they all have the same rate. And we have our surcharge customers, insert the customers that are sending us higher strength waste that put, uh, more demands on our treatment in, uh, systems and our collection, collections system. So we get a broad range of revenue from those and we'll talk about those in just a few slides here. Um, the recommendations, the next slide or next page shows the recommendations from, uh, twenty twenty two. And those were that we implement a twenty five percent rate increase, uh, to the wholesale customers, whole valley and East Molleen in twenty twenty three. And that was done, council adopted that. And then, uh, the recommendation to also, uh, propose a rate increase to those regional customers at twenty five percent in twenty twenty four as well. Uh, there's also a recommendation for a nine percent rate increase to the, uh, the retail customers. Those are the, uh, the Molleens, actually the Molleen customers, uh, in twenty twenty four. And then future rate increases shown on that page, uh, in twenty twenty five, nine percent, then four percent, uh, each year, uh, for twenty twenty six, um, those are twenty thirty one. And so the, uh, the purpose for those larger rate increases to the wholesale customers is, is due to the fact that they had received rate increases for a couple of years. It was, uh, determined by the process of this emphasis. The next page shows the, uh, results of, uh, uh, the adjustments on the actual rates. And the, uh, rows there highlighted in green, uh, the residential, the one on top is the residential rate that, uh, the bulk of our customers, the molleens would will see, currently paying six dollars and forty two cents and we charge in, in thousands of gallons and we measure in gallons. Uh, so they currently pay the six forty two that we're proposing or the recommendations that they would pay seven dollars in twenty twenty four and they would see the twenty five percent, uh, if you go down on the page, you see the twenty five percent rate uh, adjustment recommended for the wholesale customers. And then the same, uh, nine percent is applied to those, uh, those strength customers as well. And, uh, if you recall, they're just above the, uh, the green row, there's the outside customers. Council adopted a plan to, uh, increase the, the surcharge to those outside customers we'll talk about. Okay, next page is, uh, if the, uh, the proposed molleen rates are implemented, this is a comparison with our neighbors. The Rock Island down in Port East Molleen, unfortunately, they charge in cubic feet. And so we had to do the conversion uh, over to cubic, uh, over to, from them over to gallons. So, uh, if you focus on the, the bottom four rows, uh, that's the total cost. The, the top part is just the commodity charges and then the, the middle is the fixed charges. But if you focus on the bottom, the total charges, that's for, uh, our standard customer, a, uh, customer that uses about twelve and a half thousand gallons per quarter. Uh, you'll see this is the monthly charge. So molleen is in the far right column there. And then if you look across the page, you'll see where, uh, what the sewer charges would look like in comparison to what the Rock Island charges, Smolleen charges.
I mean, there means, sir. Yes. That's the average residential customer.
Yes, yeah. So the next page shows the, uh, the requirement. I just want to put this was in the presentation last year. We want to, to, to remind you that, uh, staff is going to be, and is pursuing and is, uh, been, been, going to continue to pursue Illinois EPA state revolving loan funds. Uh, we believe that this is the best solution. Uh, the state of Illinois is in the process of, uh, of codifying, uh, changes to the, the revolving loan fund legislation that allows those, um, terms to go out to thirty years. Uh, so we are in the queue. We're actually in the process of getting in the queue and, uh, and if you recall, we, uh, our engineer presented the project plan and it is in front of the EPA now and, uh, with hopes that we can get funding, uh, sometime for construction in twenty twenty four. But, uh, the point of this slide is that, um, as a condition of receiving those revolving loan funds, need to show that we can pay back the loan. So they'll want to see that we've codified rate increases. Be talking to you about that. Next page shows a, uh, the history of the sewer rates and the, the increases there to the, the A P C or the sewer utility. And then, uh, those rate increases that were adopted in fourteen, twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen related to the improvements at our water treatment plant. And then, uh, you'll see that, um, the recommendations down, uh, in the lower area there. This, this is just showing the molleen customers and the nine percent recommended for twenty twenty four. And then in yellow, it shows the, uh, those recommended increases with the, the corresponding additional revenue that the utility will receive. Okay, Carol's going to talk to you, uh, via cash flows.
From the financial view, we're scaling on right for ten one. I'd like to tell you now that it has been five years since two thousand and eighteen up till two thousand and twenty four one, completed regis rates. And on molleen, and we continue to work to do, um, budgets and revolutes. Every year, we would like to bring back the two new recommendations to make sure that we're funded and checked so that we're never not going to come back with large increases. That we just try to pay them. So the first item here on the back panel is just showing our net position summary. And you'll see at the very bottom at the end of twenty six, we anticipate we have over sixty two million dollars in our net position. What that is is on net counts that. All of our, all of our assets, all of our cash, most appreciation, that's why I do when I said, put that fund right now. And you'll see that when we, um, because as we're constructing, um, the next couple of years, that adds to our asset, that's our net position. So the cash flows is the schedule that we always kind of pay a lot of attention to. So I'm going to take the when it comes to walk in for this, so make sure you're comfortable. And as I begin this, as Tony said, we are following the plan here that we laid out last year. About bearing from those presented against, um, some of the numbers in the cash flows have changed simply because some of our items came under our overall budget last year. In fact, I know that it was under. And so we carry that good position of the audit last year forward, so we can change to a two thousand two laptop. But if you start at the very top of the page and we're going to kind of work from twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, that's our three year budget. As we'll see, we're proposing the nine percent, nine percent and four percent increases. You'll see those revenues that Tony just went through, it's on the yellow, the recommended rate increases, but they will generate for the fund, who's going to the residential. Next yellow line is making small room and that twenty five, twenty five and nine percent, and then it's trending from things residential and things up the valley. So there's some significant increases in the revenue. If you take a look at the net cash provided, it's the blue line with the red, red, bolded underlines. You will see when we start from twenty two, that our net cash divided was three million six hundred and as we move forward into twenty six, that continues to increase. That's what we're needing it to do because we need to be able to have a one to pay cash for some of our improvements. But the biggest one is when we get two thousand and twenty eight, uh, on this schedule, we are going to have a four point three million dollar annual debt service payment, P and I, principal and interest on all of our debt as a result of the South Slope. So we are ratcheting up gradually ensure that we have a proper amount of revenue and recovery ratio. If we kind of work our way down that sheet, you'll see cash flows on capital related finance, finance connectivity. The purchase of capital assets, it would be in twenty two, we spent about two point four million dollars, the play three, we funded it two point three. And then you'll see these are the C I P projects that you have already allocated. And again, don't think that we're necessarily being planned, although they are being planned, but if we are putting our money into the South Slope, we're going to be prioritized. Um, Tony, it showed you the slide on other capital assets. There's a lot of equipment here that instead of, that's the variable industry between the capital equipment. So twenty three, twenty four, we've got several million dollars there each year going there. We are also counting the vehicles at this fund and considering those vehicles and their itemized amount. Equipment schedule. And then we begin our South Slope design and construction. Here you'll start seeing our amounts coming in. On the blue and the white underneath, this is going to be our draw from the EPA loan program. So we're going to start using our old cash reserves as we get to low, then we're going to start drawing from that loan. It's going to be going out. So you will see in twenty five and twenty six, it's going to span from twenty million towards twenty million four. And then as we work, sorry, that's.
So that's just for South Slope. That doesn't matter if you require an upgrade.
Then as we go down into this. See that very first line, this is projected E P A loan starting twenty eight. We identified that and after twelve years, coming through, we're here to start seeing that four point three number dropping in. The two items down below are the, uh, this is the principal and interest payment, but we are currently paying better than two and a half million dollars. So in addition to that, we'll get another four point three. The next one I want to show you is going to be the net increase will be based in cash, cash equivalents. Line right before the yellow. This is an important example. If you look back into twenty two, we're actually in a deficit condition. And as we are now working our way, we see fee increases and we have substantial drawdown here in twenty three and that's capital. Then if we hit twenty four with our fee increases, you'll see that number starting to ratchet up, seven hundred and seventy three in twenty four, two million dollars at two point five. This is the net cash, the cash coming in, letting everything going out. This is the net amount and we are wanting to work our way up that four point three amount. Yeah.
So Carol, as we're working our way up to that, I understand the, we, that gradually grows. Does that mean we have two million dollars that is not being allocated in those two years?
No, because there, we actually debated if we should have taken this out a couple of more years. And you'll see some of these starting to ratchet up like the bottom yellow lines. Those are going to come completely down into the twenty, around a hundred and sixty five percent in twenty six. It's going to be a huge drop assuming that construction, just based on the timing. This is our best, best estimate of timing. It could, it could go faster, it could go slower, but we have to have those funds on hand or we don't even qualify for the loan.
Right, so it, but, but it is, it's, it's money we are taking and that we're holding in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Or in that expenditure that is coming.
Exactly.
Yeah, so kind of cash, so we can allocate.
Yeah, yeah. And you'll see that hundred and sixty five percent, that light blue, that's going to come way down to going by the thirty percent rate.
Which is the required.
Yes. Of the, obviously, you might have recommended. If you turn to the chart on the next scale, it's just a little bit of a visual and that I wanted everyone to look at, okay, a little bit here. Um, the goal is to have our revenue, and again, it's a little bit higher because we have to have hundred point two, hundred and twenty five, same coverage rate. So that's why you're seeing that revenue change slightly will be. So the white line is our operating expenditure that always happens to, um, to the beginning of the debt, but the debt's going to become very, very large as we get to twenty twenty eight. But this plan is absolutely important. Right now, there's no surprise. So before we go into the next fund, I'd like to hit your, hit your fee schedules. And these are the same numbers that we already seen last year, although we added if you're twenty twenty five funding here. And if you find it's, we've separated it into two sections. The white blue is talking about the utility funds up above, that is the unfunded project we're going to talk about next. But for W P C, that monthly charge in twenty four would impact about how cool with an average usage in hand. This will fluctuate if you're a real heavy residential, you're going to pay more if, if you're a smaller mall with a lower usage, it will be less. This is our average. Three dollars and thirty five cents per month. Or roughly forty dollars and twenty cents. And then if you move around to the twenty five, twenty six, you'll also. Twenty five in the month will be at three fifty five and a drop to the one seventy eight because the percentage you're going to have, you have to have to four percent. Interesting probably they had. See any questions, any, okay.
Okay, so next one is the stormwater fund. The stormwater, uh, was developed as a utility in two thousand and two in response to the regulations that regulated the discharge of cities and their storm sewers. Uh, so we're going to develop this utility and largely in response to the need to, uh, meet the regulatory requirements. So this utility has really two responsibilities. One is, uh, to, uh, meet the requirements of the N P D S and their, uh, N P D S is National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So there are certain, certain things that we have to do at the fore on, uh, as the result, we would. A lot of people don't realize it, but we're actually out, um, similar to our wastewater, uh, plants, we're out, uh, sampling with the discharge of the water as it goes into the neighboring uh, rivers and ensuring that there's a pollution and, and also, uh, ensuring that there's no, so, 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 uh, that's one of the requirements. And the other one is to actually maintain the storm sewers. Two hundred miles of, of ice and other pieces of conveyance that are all buried under the city streets and, and, uh, initially, when the utility was created, the, uh, the, the capital improvement program largely subsidized improvements to the storm sewer system. Those, those improvements were, uh, just included as part of the loan improvement. And, uh, they became councils will in the late, uh, around two thousand nineteen, around when the time went, was moved over under the utilities and from that, uh, the, the fund or utility operate more like a business unit and, and, uh, they pay its own way. And, uh, it less subsidize subsidy from, uh, capital improvements and, and the general fund. And so we've been working toward that. Uh, there, uh, the bullets there on the bottom of that next slide, if you're on the slide that says stormwater. Uh, those are the sources of revenue for the, uh, utility. We, uh, we charge based on the size of the parcel. So all parcels in Molleen are charged a rate. And if it's a residential, less than four, uh, residences on the parcel, then, uh, then it gets charged to flat rate. It's either a small, medium or large based on the size. And, uh, council adopted rate increases in, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty three that result in the rates that you see there per quarter. And we don't intend to keep going back and forth on quarterly and then monthly. But we're saying this because this is the way that the rates are, are codified now and it is our intent and the Carol staff is working vigorously to try and uh, get a monthly billing, uh, ready to roll. And if, and if we're successful in that, that will help, uh, the, these adjustments, of the, we'll do these adjustments. So a small residential customer is seven dollars and fifty nine cents per quarter and divided by three. Sixty seven percent of customers for the storm utility are small, wasn't it? The next page shows, oh, actually, no, no, and that is, uh, for commercial properties. Uh, council adopted a change last year. Uh, council adopted a change last year that, um, we, we formerly had a, uh, a complex formula that we used to charge commercial properties. And it included a percentage of the imperious acreage and a percentage of the previous acreage and then add it together and then multiply by a factor. So we wanted to develop a, a simpler formula, one that, uh, commercial property owner could, that, uh, have more influence on the bill by reducing the amount of imperious acreage. So the council adopted the change last year that only charges commercial properties based on imperious acreage. So that has been successful and, uh, and, uh, we get a lot of positive feedback with our. So the next page is the, uh, list of capital improvements associated with the storm utility. You'll see that, um, storm utility is, um, is dwarfed by the water. You'll see that um storm utility is um is dwarfed by the water fund and the sewer fund. And that it doesn't own really own any equipment or trucks or anything. We're gonna work on that, we're gonna try and purchase, you see in the top of the twenty twenty three. Storm utility purchased a truck for the water fund and they've also purchased a truck, used truck on the sewer fund. And so uh you know, intend to to build that utility so that it can stand on its own. Then you'll see beyond the right, the uh list of projects that are. Okay, next page is uh. In response to strategic goal one point five F, which is the to staff needs to develop a stormwater master plan. We've been working on that. Council approved a contract with Robert Murphy and Tilly and we've been working with them. Andy Far, uh stormwater manager is uh going to be presenting findings from that within the next month or two. And we expect that the the recommendations from that will prioritize uh goals for us with regard to staffing and resources. Where we needed it, where and how frequently we need to do preventative maintenance, uh watershed improvements. As well as uh we've been talking a lot about green infrastructure and if you look on the next page. Uh you'll see some examples of green infrastructure and and while they're more green infrastructure is more expensive. Uh it pays dividends in the long term and and. Uh the purpose of the storm utility as codified is to reduce flooding and and not to convey. So it's our job to uh to control and by installing features in our capital improvement projects. That will minimize the instantaneous discharge. Uh from a from a previous impervious surface. We are serving to to meet the need with the purpose of the utility. So just know that that's kind of the most. Okay, next page is the uh the results of the twenty twenty two. Uh analysis that we did. Uh as I previously mentioned, it doesn't show there on the left table. The increase that was implemented in twenty twenty three, but it also recommended a thirty percent increase in uh twenty twenty four. Now thirty percent does seem, it sound like a lot, but on a monthly basis, that's for sixty seven percent of our customers, that's seventy six cents a month. And then a median residential is um dollar forty six a month, three dollars for a large parcel. And then uh those commercial customers I mentioned, we charged them by the uh impervious acreage. It's sixteen dollars and twenty cents uh per month increase. And then you'll see uh twenty five and twenty six, the the model or the analysis recommended from last year. Uh includes two percent increases just to heat case with increasing costs. Then uh to the right of that page shows uh where we compare and where our rates compare uh with the neighboring communities. Uh you'll see the uh the column that shows Moline's recommended rate for twenty twenty four. Uh they're at three dollars twenty nine cents. And then as compared to what Rock Grounds proposed rate is, that's codified. And then they also have a codified rate for uh twenty twenty five as well, uh the small S A set rate. Our staff has talked to their staff. So next slide shows the uh. A comparison that Andy did, he did the same exact comparison last year uh in his presentation. And we he selected these two locations as a comparison for commercial properties. The uh this location on the left is the uh the Hobby Lobby building down on John Dear Road. And uh maybe hard to read there, but um that site was selected because it's almost all impervious surface. And so uh we wanted to give you a comparison uh of what the charge would be. And it looks like the current charge is four dollars, four hundred and twenty dollars per month. And as as uh and then the proposed rate. Five hundred forty six. So uh and then on the the right hand side of that slide, it shows that the uh property just a few uh. Two buildings over is the Bots of East Christian School. It is uh it is commercial. Um that's a commercial property, but it's contrast with Hobby Lobby because it has much more impervious surface. And so uh Andy's done the the measurement and and determined that the the current rate uh is is forty six dollars twenty two cents per month. Uh as compared to Rocket Base Moline is forty four and uh Rock Grounds sixty six. And now you can see what the proposed rate could be for Moline uh if uh council allows the increase. Okay, and so the next slide shows the uh the history of uh rate changes for stormwater. You can see that there was a large increase, dropped in two thousand and five, but then nothing until our council acted last year. And uh and we're personally proposing a thirty percent increase at the beginning of twenty twenty four. And you can see the corresponding uh revenue down below in the other. So Carol will comment on that and.
Seventeen years now. And that's our reason that we had thirty percent.
Doesn't last that much.
So can you can you. I'll kind of go through this. Although people, but it's sounding the same. Presentation is what we did for the uh W P C. The first thing there is to show me our net position in this fund. At the end of two thousand and twenty six, we anticipate net position of about thirteen point three million dollars. We'll turn to the cash flow. And along the very top, that's where you'll see those home rating places in twenty three and. As Tony said, we implemented thirty percent January first in twenty three, have been another thirty and potentially two percent, two percent. We are going to be evaluating future years every single year. And just in right now, it appears that somewhere in between about two percent. We've got all the revenues on the top, the net cash provided in the first line. Back in twenty two, the net cash provided from operating as revenues over expenditures, we only had a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars to work with. As we move forward, because of the rate changes by twenty twenty six, we're getting up way over a million dollars. At my blue line twenty ten. If you then skip down to the bold red box. And you'll hear twenty fifth line, that's where you'll see all, basically all this money going into. So council identifies priorities, because they're right into the. This would support roughly around a million dollars every year. As we head into twenty six. And we look at those totals, you'll see our cash and investments as a percentage of operating. Is about nineteen percent, that's slightly below our recommended quality. These numbers will fluctuate up and down. At the end of twenty six, we're anticipating a capital improvement purchase of over four hundred thousand dollars from Second Pump at sixteen street station. At the one time drawdown and then we will work on building that at five point five. Since we've got cash reserves, we do not want to go over the top trying to raise the work. Be confident that somewhere in two percent on going. So this fund is really one. With project money, it's going to stay within our financial quality. You turn to the page, the charts. This cash flow, they showed exactly what's happening, our revenues basically are just matching exactly what's that outgoing spend. Right where we want to be and on the cash reserve part, again. Cash reserves can fluctuate from year to year. But overall, it is it's it's fallen. Falling true to revenues over expenses. So if you take a look at your. C chart, as Tony said, on a month, just on a monthly basis, stormwater and this is for a medium. So this is what percentage of the people having. That's like fifteen percent I think. Well, it's not the greatest portion, but it's a dollar forty six a month or roughly seventeen dollars per year. And then you'll see those numbers going down. Any questions on that?
In in the current stormwater budget, there's not really been any lighted for moving forward. Right, like so even everything has had to be shared and react and so that's why. Right, it's been very difficult to be proactive, it's been largely. Because we've taken twenty something years to increase our rates.
But it should be noted that you were actually able to get a lot more. You don't want streets that. It's gonna help us get a lot more reconstruction down because we have more money. Get more orders we have to replace. But because we're gonna have some total reconstructions. This money is gonna help us. I don't think I'm wrong here, that this money will help us with that.
It'll stretch the screen out.
Yes, it stretches the dollars.
Sure.
And in the past, when I first started working here. The I P didn't have to help pay for the stormwater practice.
Okay, water system. Okay, so the uh the water system, the rates haven't changed since twenty fourteen. And that's largely due to the fact that when Carol looks at the uh cash flows going out into twenty twenty six, that we've got some debt that's retiring. From the water meter replacements project that we did in twenty ten and also the uh the two thousand two uh two thousand three, two thousand four water treatment plant project. Uh so that, all that debt will retire and and the fund will enjoy the the uh the ability not to have to pay that anymore. And then also, we've also uh got this partnership with Silves where um we've got this mutually beneficial uh deal to sell them some water and. For them to enjoy the benefit of our good quality water. Uh but uh the challenges coming as mayor, as you mentioned, is that some lead water service line replacements are coming and you'll see when we go to the next slide that we've got some. Allocations in place for that. And also uh you'll see also in the slides that um we're planning to do a facilities planning study for the water treatment plant. Even though we did uh about twenty million dollars of improvements to it back in two thousand and two, three and four. Uh those improvements are not what we were told and and I'll show you an example of that. Uh so we expect to have some investments in the study will will produce some recommendations and some prioritized uh investments going on in the future and then. Uh at some point in the future, I also intend to be talking to you about uh P P V S regulations, which are in the draft form and then uh. And there may be also, as we uh talked uh just a second ago about Silves, there may be other regional opportunities that may uh allow us to. Keep her in the business. So uh if you look at the next page, it um it includes all of the uh capital improvements and capital investments for the water plant. Around the right, again, is the investments that are uh already approved or approved. As part of the capital improvement plan, but if you look out to twenty twenty five. Uh we've got a three point one million dollar uh allocation for lead water service lines. And so uh just a reminder, we're still in the running for some funding for from uh. Congressman Soranci for twenty twenty four, but we're also in the queue to get some uh state revolving loan plans for lead service line replacements. Uh starting in twenty twenty five and depending on the areas that are selected, if they meet the uh the median household incomes for the. Median household income for the census tracts, they get the. So uh we want to try and be strategic about selecting areas that. Um you'll see the vehicles there and then uh there's some money uh uh some of the projects you've already approved, cybersecurity at the water treatment plant. The next page shows um some of the challenges our water plant manager Bob, he gave me uh. That one on the left is a our, it's our porno silicon acid tank. It's a, it's an eight thousand gallon tank that's made of fiberglass, but the life of that tank is twenty years and twenty years old. And it's developed a uh a little uh C P A leak and so that's something that that deals with. But uh there's a bunch of things like that that uh you can see there at the bottom. Uh you know, where the the one of the, what makes you strong makes you weak, my boss used to say that. So what makes us strong is that we're right on the banks of this great river. But it's just we do that river once. And so you can see the water creeping up to our transformer there at the over picture, so you've got to watch that. Um next slide is the rate comparison, so uh so there there uh I guess I didn't say this yet, but the uh. The analysis that we did last year did not recommend any increase to the water rates for twenty twenty three. Nor for twenty twenty four, but it does for twenty twenty five, the recommendation was for a seven percent increase in twenty twenty five. So there uh you'll see it's just like the uh the sewer comparison, the the uh rows on top are for the commodity. Rows in the middle are for the fixed revenue. And then the bottom is the total of cost and that's the that's the same, it's for an average customer, residential customer, it's twelve and a half thousand dollars per quarter. But this is the monthly cost, so if we implement that seven percent increase. Uh as recommended in twenty twenty five, you'll see the change there. And then there's a slight increase, I'll remember Carol what that is for twenty twenty uh six.
Oh yes, it's two percent.
There's a two percent increase just to be based with um. So you can see kind of where when we compare with uh Devonport or Smalling and I heard and once again, it's going to go to. So the next page is the history of water uh rate changes. And you can see we haven't had an increase since uh twenty fourteen. And then the uh. The corresponding revenue associated with what we're recommending twenty twenty five and then the twenty twenty six.
For ten years we have a. And we're still very, very competitive. We're into the next page that um that mission um we anticipate the end of twenty six at fifty five or sixty million dollars. Pretty healthy fund. Go right into the cash flow. Okay, we'll be that very top. We've met seven percent increase in twenty five and two percent in twenty six following the plan. That we talked about last year, the yellow rose is the additional to recommended um with the rate increase. Revenue that that. And then if we have the net cash provided. This one kind of fluctuates a little bit all over the board, but um we've got about one point three million dollars going forward in twenty six. That we will be able to provide for some projects. If you go down to the. Portion of the cash flows from capital and other financing activities, there's where you'll see the version of our capital asset that ties out with the spreadsheet. It goes through our infrastructure, involves our vehicles and our equipment. But in those last two years, it's totally the same. Got three million three hundred and fifty thousand and three million two hundred and fifty thousand. That includes three million in each of those years for that lead service. That would wonderful.
Hey, uh also the lead water service line, uh there's a provision in the uh. The. Infrastructure investments in the O S Act that and that that when we flow into Illinois that they have to use, they have to provide that money uh without interest. So uh so any money that we borrow uh for uh lead service lines. Uh will be one, it will be third year term, the two, it'll be zero percentages. And then on top of that, some of it could be personally forgiven.
Based on the.
Based on the. Um is there a maximum of how much? That pays on how much would be right? Three million.
It's kind of curious like, yeah.
No, that's that's.
And you'll.
And you'll
Right.
You'll see if you drop a couple of lines down in red. Is there RF? Loan payment? You will see starting in twenty five, if we are to receive that, it would be a hundred thousand per year for the loan. Hundred thousand times thirty years. If that three million exactly, no interest. Then the second year, having gotten the three million, but another three million that are and it goes to the two hundred thousand. And ongoing, we've we've gotta make sure our needs can pay those, and it's very reasonable amount for debt service payments.
Uh Mr. Lo, you said there's certain situations where principles forgiven? What are those provisions? Yeah, so the the state has a scoring system, so we would uh would submit uh there's a scoring system based on the median household income from the census tract. So the city, and I I'm not the expert on this, and I don't know if KJ is here, who would be the one to talk about this, but the city's broken into census tracts and each of those census tracts has a median household income. And when you plug that median household income into the state's calculator, that coupled with the the um the fact that we have not received, we've benefited from this program, it it would develop a score for us. Whether the lower or the higher risk for awareness, we're likely to do.
School, I think all that's always uh would be maybe helpful for us to know if that's any census tract. Ever Nick Huggins, Molly Howie with the score, or if it's just the two or so that we have that are qualified census tracts. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Either way, it's still a benefit to us, but it would be good for us to know that because anticipating how all these
Yeah.
Census tract might work, but it's really only the two qualified. Follow the that and something.
Absolutely. Staying on the topic of lead service line. And this is a little outside of mobile, we're not about it. Do do we know of any programs or anything we need to do to help residents to bigger end of this? Does that remain a huge concern of mine, is it's gonna be very alarming for a lot of owners? Some of whom may ask for it, whether that's the, I mean, obviously, the best thing would be somebody who's ran, pays for that. But far as that, even if it became part of like, we take that out and like entering a loan program to the resident player that was challenged, that's just wanna keep that top of mind. Yeah, so um I guess one of the, there is a downside to receiving with zero percentage of money is that we, well, actually, whether we receive the the money or not, uh we as the utility are responsible for the entire service line to make sure it gets replaced. So it would be our responsibility to make sure that it gets replaced. If we received the loan funds, we have to use it to replace the entire line. Uh and so
So that's protected.
We're gonna uh our water distribution manager Levi, he's working on a presentation and you guys will have some of decisions to make on how uh we'll have some options for you, but um how we're gonna, how we're gonna do that. If you guys want to recapture any of that, some costs from the property owners or do you want to capture a share of part of it or or we'll have some uh examples of what some of the other communities and state. How we treat with like an assessment? I got three or ten.
Yes, the loan, I think, started this year, this summer. My mom, she said uh except that they had a hundred percent forgiveness or whatever because she didn't get any.
I am not aware that this loan name would not be it's not a problem, it's kind of now, uh that's not to say that it couldn't have been, you know, did you go a block grant ones or something like that.
It it might be good as soon as you give us the options that have that question answer, but it put our neighbors how are they approaching it? I we do know, I think you all remember that we're farther ahead than some of our neighbors who just identified this and that have to be replaced, right? But that project started a while ago.
Absolutely.
He's always very proud of it. But you get what I'm saying, if you can come back and explain.
Yeah, I think it's also important to point out that with regard to water services and for sewer pipelines, the city of Moline has responsibility for part of the service line. Um only uh phones up to the property line for the water servicing consumer level where our neighbors do not own any. So property address is responsible all the way up to up to the main.
Okay, thank you for that. What else do you have on this packet?
Um just moving down the line, we're quick at the end, Owen said our last debt repayment on water at zero P, dropping off to twenty four by nine hundred and thirty seven and twelve thousand dollar interest. And our ending cash reserves are right on target at twenty five percent of the interest. We can follow the plan, it's all worked through, but the first line is character to the main. On goal, if we can stay where we're at, about two point one, two point three million dollars of cash reserves directly. And again, if you look at your chart, again, we're not talking about raising fees in twenty four, then in twenty five for water, the monthly impact in twenty five would be two dollars and twenty seven cents, seven percent, but it goes down to sixty eight cents in whole.
What is your most sanitation?
Yeah.
Yep, and uh Rod's interested in doing this part here, and he's gonna jump in if I say something wrong. Uh so the sanitation fund, it's an enterprise, it's uh it's intended to be self sustaining. It has responsibility for the residential residential refuse and recycling, as well as fresh collection, lot of waste, or waste collection, a lot of solid waste. So if you remember that uh that was all in front of you last year, and the council adopted some changes uh to those um the latter four items. Uh next slide is the um sanitation fund uh cash flows. The in the past, similar to the stormwater, the fund was subsidized by the general fund. And it was council's desire to to wean this fund off of the the general fund and and allow it to be more self sustaining. Uh so uh those loans that you see uh Carol will speak those. Council did adopt a rate increase in twenty twenty three, but the uh the uh model that would, the analysis that was done last year uh provided that additional increases were required in order for the fund to be self sustaining. And so seven percent increases are recommended for twenty twenty four and for twenty twenty five. And uh you'll see on the next page, the uh the rate that we're proposing is in the bottom, is on the bottom there for twenty four and twenty five and twenty six are two percent increase. And that's in comparison with the neighborhood we need. That's for solid waste and and recycling. And that's on the on the multiple lists. Okay, the next page uh shows the recommendations, so um uh currently, I think the rate in twenty twenty three went from nine forty two up to ten oh eight. And I know we said ten oh eight, but uh we're saying ten oh eight, and on the previous slide it says uh not fourteen forty eight. And that's because the uh it's up to the recycling charge is broken on it, so the code goes to that. So um so there's a, there's no uh proposed change to the recycling fee. So um that produces a uh solid waste recycle charge, you know, twenty twenty four, fourteen forty eight, twenty twenty five, fifteen, twelve, twenty six, twenty two.
And and sorry, should I add that earlier, are those numbers like the increases, is that including the uh we pick up or that's separate?
Um it's hopefully good.
Yes.
In part, the rest, the labor side of it, some stuff. Okay, and uh the next page shows the history of rate changes for the sanitation fund. And you can see the seven percent that was adopted in twenty twenty three and then the recommended changes that were proposed in twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. Uh if I'm correct, there are no proposed changes for the um brush on race and
We're just holding this book down for the last.
Okay.
When we get into the financials, probably very fast. Debt position, in good position, about four point three million in twenty twenty six. Take a look at the cash flow, you'll see the increase in twenty, it's not the only top. Um I'd like to point out that um the debt, it's the salmon color, the continuing on debt, very happy that those root payments aren't ending in twenty twenty four, our last debt payment. And if you take a look at the 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 green moon line, the bottom of the yellow, the remaining reserves um or operating capital reserves, sorry, it's percentage, you'll see that at forty three point six percent. And the reason for that is um we are accumulating money in this fund to pay for vehicles. And it's a red box in twenty six, the two point one million dollars, we are paying five thousand. There's a total of ten vehicles in the sanitation fund. Well, the following year in twenty seven, we have a rear loader that we're gonna be purchasing for four hundred and twenty six thousand, which will bring that cash reserve back down to twenty five percent. So it's, it is one hundred percent, you're just like right on track. We're not accumulating any extra money, we're trying to break even with operations and the placement of the building parts. Again, you can take a look at your fee schedule, that means per month and per year, I'll leave that per year. For sanitation, seventy one cents and twenty four per month. And a total of eight dollars and fifty two cents for the Any questions on that?
Um we can get all of these utilities fees, they're all um reminding me to ask where where can we transition to monthly? Because I recognize that we're talking about this on a monthly basis, but the average household, we've got a ninety dollar increase per bill. And if we're remaining hourly, and that means a full lot of families who are going to see a lot larger
We are trying very hard to hit some monthly billing. As you know, we kind of have a slow start in staffing throughout this year, we didn't get staffing, hold up linear, we're getting but we are on fast track, we're still shooting that hopefully, there's a very, I don't even wanna make a promise. We we got this one chance, it could happen in January, but what really should be equal, should be we are also looking at, and we don't know if it's feasible yet, our staff are working with our staff. But Janine had come up with the idea that very similar to Mid America, that in addition to the monthly billing, we might be looking at budget billing. I don't know if we even have budget billing. This rate, this same amount, and and the reason Janine was thinking about that, we are trying to encourage people to do auto pay. As you know, so right now, with monthly billing, we're gonna have over seventy five thousand people coming into buying. If we can get all the people on auto, that will minimize that. But if it's on budget billing, the main reason people, number one, they don't have checkbook and they don't sign up for auto. Second reason they don't sign up is because they don't like the idea of this pulling for a bill that they do not know what's going to be and so I thought it was brilliant, I'm really hoping that we're ready to give that to our staff for vendors.
Thank you for that. Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions?
Just wanted, I just wanted to put a comment out there, put this out there for future reference, because this was something that I've been thinking about since a little two years ago. City Council ultimately approved the LRS project in terms of meeting criteria that would be determined by EDA. Uh the sizable revenue stream is and revenue stream really needs to go toward repayment of the debt if seven. That's the top priority is to get that off of our general fund obligation, because that's what's been funding it these years. So as you look forward to future years, once that debt is basically gone, Carol will tell you.
You can read it.
Yeah. So there you go. For that, that revenue stream that comes in, which is estimated at three hundred, set up to three hundred two thousand, so here. Well, as the um just we just use that number for now, that's the the tonnage rate that we get for the time. And that's really the the suggestion that we dedicated that to go back to sanitation. Well, as to reduce user rates to citizens. Break down those user rates. So we're gonna be a sizable amount of money going forward again, it's literally an eighteen billion dollar worth of users. So it's gonna really put us in a competitive position when it comes to sanitation or other purposes, if you determine. That would be my recommendation.
Uh one final note, if there's a question, or whether it also same census section?
Who want me to go first? Just as you're kind of wrapping up this section, if you take a look in the blue, you're looking for all four utilities on a monthly basis. It'd be about five dollars and fifty two cents per month, or sixty six dollars and twenty four cents. All four of those.
And just, just to provide indication, like think about the impacts of listen. Remember a year, about a year ago, with the Jackson Pacifica had a massive problem because they had not had some pace with their infrastructure, their water infrastructure. They had no access. Um what you all have proposed and what we have begun to enact as a planned this past budget cycle, right? Was a plan to make sure we fund everything in the future and not end up in that kind of situation, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I I very much appreciate the proactive and prepared approach. Because even when we're not on this table, like, you know, everyone cares. Where we're at now.
In in this past, I had to think again, we're only making the rates on annual basis. Right, we we had a assignment, we wanted to keep those all for budgeting purposes, assuming we were gonna follow the plan. We almost set you had talked a little bit earlier about wastewater and so so the improvements of us into that we straight, we had that revenue coming. But we need to set that one out longer term, be able to prove to the state you're buying money from. We will, but you won't have to make that decision this year, it'll be next, it'll be only applied for the law.
I still like the idea of annual fees and Josh said, you know, changes that needed, but obviously, if the decision to do that is true of the law
Thank you for the direction you all made from here, I think you're very well okay, this this plan.
It's a usual plan, we've seen it again, and the budget that's proposed. Thank you, so remember, we're gonna
We moved to eight point two, completing hundred programs. Thank you also, Carol.
Yeah, I'm gonna find out, we got, again, we're gonna set my playback and work there from the recommendation. So if everybody has this handout, we're just gonna, we're only gonna spend the majority of this money on the first few pages. I would like you to keep your fee schedule in front of you, because then if you want to continue trying to fund somebody unfunded, we are only calculating what that entails for residents. The amounts on this heat graph here are showing everything all in. So it's the starting point of all the proposed projects, fully funded. As we go far away through tonight, Lori is gonna have it online um through Excel spreadsheet. If we can change the timing of which projects might be done, if we can change the level of funding, and then we can change the level of revenue sources we're doing well. And then we are gonna tie that back into the fee schedule for residents. So by the time the lease tonight, we're gonna have two meals. So if you take your packet, we're just gonna kind of watch the disc quickly because So if you take your packet, we're just going to kind of watch the disc quickly, because we want to send a big portion of our night tonight working on the major spreadsheet project. Go for a quick review, that very first page, back in June, Bob introduced that we had a lot of competing. We had a list of fifteen items in the folder. Over the course of the last couple of months, we have addressed four of those items, and go through the list very, very quickly. Nine of those items are going to be addressed tonight with potential new revenue stream. Two items we're going to do with the phone. We're going to go through the list, and if you want to check some of the ones off that we've already addressed, make sure you're ready. I got a couple of checks. Um, please inquire pension, first one, and I want you to pull out, there's another handout of the play. When we met back in June, we were concerned that our actuarial report said that we could reimburse up to one point four million dollars on an end of four, two point five percent increase. Um, with the state legislation and where they are at, our actuaries have come back. They are now recommending that we not much stand down and that we stay with the ninety percent funding margin for twenty forty. So our funding is actually going down there. With the states proposing, if it does not happen this year, there's a potential in the next year or two, they are. If you know now that it is a state funded, please inquire pension fund. There are so many cities that are funded below fifty percent and below thirty, and some chances. That they have no way of making it to the ninety, one hundred percent by twenty forty, so they're going to potentially take it out to the under fifty. So ninety percent for two thousand fifty. So our actuary is saying, you're, we are currently funded at seventy six, seventy six, seventy eight percent for those funds. They're saying stand down.
Good news.
Um, yes, on this.
Scary news additionally.
Um, yes, on this printout, oh yes.
And that's because they're expected to regain value of the markets.
They, yeah, it, there's a regain value in the market, but they're just allowing people, we have to increase their taxes so greatly to try to fund.
I understand the state action, I'm trying to understand our action. It's.
Our, our action.
Yes.
We are currently, we issued the POV bonds, we were funded at eighty five percent. We are just shy of eighty percent now, because we didn't have some of that, although our last totally report here, they have gained substantial made headway this year, so I'm, I'm very, very pleased with that. Since we are in the eighty percent range, our actuary is saying with all their calculations to make ninety percent to twenty forty, that we can, we can go with the amounts that are highlighted here, because actually it's high B. I was very, very pleased with that, so the decision to issue POV bonds is working for us, and it saves us a substantial amount. But just so you can see, this was blamed by, by Marvah, that did it for both police and fire, and that is their recommendations on this case. There's actually like a fifty page in, in depth, if you'd like to see all the calculations, I'm happy to share, if I can give you the story. So anyway, a quick check on police and fire, as you know, um, on the chips, we go through it every year during the budget. There's about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of additional advances that are being handed from the general fund. We have included that in the budget already. And Lori and I and, and various staff all were coming in, when we come to October, we are going to be, because they need to issue a balanced budget. We've got that number already taken care of, that's the check. We have also, um, your guidance, I doubt that that ever brings back the months that are here. I think we're getting very close to the union negotiations with the BACs me, and all those numbers are included in the budget as well. Fully funded and, and directions of a big check. Um, over the last few months, we've had several information on most of these unfunded projects. Just heard from the chief, I think it was last week, on the LTE integrated traffic safety system. Um, that's an open item, circle by that one. Um, we are still hoping that we are in the queue for that one point five million dollars. If we don't get that grant, that would be unfunded in the. We're just in the wait right now. The PCI consultant recommendation, as you know, again, that looks back in June. And we're going to talk about that more in depth here a little bit, but the amount was two to three million dollars for advanced VIP annually. Currently, we have zero budget that we cannot do an additional amount tonight. We will do the changes in fees and taxes, we're going to show a potential method that you put into that, that you can really allow for the next year. Using our capital growth. Really now, you can do a hack check, um, counsel to pass the first reading for where I'm at. Reading, I mean.
Yes.
And again, that's a fee-driven program, and you'll see in the budget, we're setting it up as a separate fund. Implementation on January first of twenty four, and it does include two new inspector positions for four years and. Gate park, um, we had the presentation, we're going to show potentially how we can fund that, but the amount is three point two million, an open item. Central fire station, that fell back in June, that looks at for this to twenty twenty seven. But we have it in the ten, ten year plan, we're going to go through shortly, and we're going to show you. If you were to go with that recommendation that the chief is showing as well as the architects, we have a method of potentially. I seventy four, as you know, we contracted NKS, and currently, we only have a half a million dollars remaining. We paid a half a million dollars to contract them. Got a half a million starting out. Tonight, we're going to show you how potentially we could start accumulating to funds to use since the mid every, until this down. On the riverfront, anything throughout the entire. The cash flow for some future tip incentives, um, honestly, we're going to come back in the next thirty, sixty days, and those development. Perhaps we don't have enough, ain't that the open item right now, one of the two open items. Our in-house resurfacing, um, next week, you're on, on September twenty sixth, Rod's going to come back with, um, an actual paper, and we've got that built into the budget using some ARCA funds, and we can talk a little bit about it tonight, and then Rod will wrap that up next week. We'll be backing title program, we are agreeing that until next year. Um, we've talked about facility security upgrades, we can city hall and public parks. We're going to show that we do have some money allocated when we get to the ARCA project. And that's right now, it's an open item, and then we've got, um, we were retired ten sports and the turbine bill, and we just had the information prepared last week. We're going to again, show potentially what it would take for the funding to be from this. Damn, I want me to rig spreadsheet.
We've got two checks, one half check.
Two checks, three?
One and third check.
Four, before.
General fund.
Yeah, so yeah, four check properly, police and fire, general fund cash flow, every green box is gone, and then rental housing, we have a check.
Can I start rental housing program really quickly? With the idea of this being, being driven, one sheet created enterprise fund, specifically for this.
What we're setting it up, there's different ways for different programs and all the time, this is set, set up as a special revenue part. And because it's fee-driven, it's going to be in a separate class by itself, in a separate fund, all revenues and expenditures totally separate. So we will, every year be able to see if we can do so, the entirety is going to roll off.
So this will just be a, another fund that we're, which is great, because.
But at any given point, we can tell you. Are you ready?
Ready.
Ready, go ahead. Okay. So Charlie, before we start, what time, what time is my belief?
We know people say that I'm loud, so.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm thinking, if you want enough feedback from the D posts, then we need to shoot your item. And shoot me fifteen, eighteen.
Okay, okay, that could be fine.
We can do it.
We can do it, we there, they have done, they have done some folk, their folk are guests. We're going to start. So I, I would like to start out, like, just kind of hang on one second.
I, I think, I'd be okay with going longer, just say, we'll break it between.
Yeah, yeah, before the last item on the agenda, we can take a.
We're going to need to hold on. Kind of just doing it.
It's, I will ask her what.
All right, go for it. Okay, I'm happy that you had an opportunity to look at these spreadsheets, I'm going to kind of walk you through it, just to make sure everybody's on the same page before we start. And again, Lori's got it up here on the screen. So this schedule is showing a ten year plan for funding all of the projects that we just talked about. So with everything all in, it's a starting point, and we are now looking for counsel to prioritize, prioritize the items. As a part of it, we are also showing new viable revenue sources that own the project, and have the project. And as you know, as we vote on this, it is an opportunity to reinvest in the community. And these are just my thoughts, but if you do nothing, you will get nothing. And those unfunded projects that are on the list that we continue to talk about, continue to just get picked out, you know. So we're just showing you the opportunity, um, with viable revenue sources, that if you want, want you to do any of these planning, you're the next. But then walk you through this spreadsheet. Um, beginning fundamentals, we'll see that twenty four, still like there, there's a half a million dollars. And here we have a million dollars allocated to I seventy four. We pay NKS, pay a half a million, that's where we're starting, that's all the money we currently have, the half a million dollars, very capital. We are wanting counsel to consider taking the increased growth in our capital values. To consider taking that growth and taking all those taxes that it would generate in order to meet that PCI consultant recommendation of putting it right into infrastructure. And in a little bit here, we're going to have David go through, what does that mean, what kind of projects are we going to do, what does that look like, what will we show? As we go across that property tax line, this coming year, we do not have certified values yet, we don't even have preliminary values for now. This is the year, every four years, they do a complete evaluation. And the Moline Township right now is projected to be a six to seven percent growth. And, um, South Moline Township is in the five to six percent range of the North Point Six. Every property is being adjusted with pockets for sales happening. So it's not like it's straight across the board, this is an average, but we assess it. It in that range of six to seven, six to seven. Before we go, I'm just going to dwell on property taxes for a little bit. You can turn to this handout, and have a police and fire pension. I'd like to take five minutes to go through history, based on understanding property taxes. That first page, it looks like this. Ten year history of property tax collections, back in fourteen, we collected fourteen million fifth. Today, fourteen million eight. That is a percentage change of seven point seven, three percent over ten years, one point seven seven per year. If you kind of look at the pattern, you'll see a couple of years are frozen. If you look at seventeen, we are at fifteen point two eight nine. We lowered taxes in twenty two to fifteen point three, you see that in twenty two? So we started back to our two thousand and seventeen level. We have not taken advantage of a lot of this growth, and obviously, we want to keep property active and global issue constantly. But at the same time, looking at the priorities of our pillars, how, how we address those in the high priorities. If you turn the page then, the growth in the red box in the middle, the base ten year period for our values, from nineteen point four nine. If you get taken advantage of that growth, and I'm not saying you should always take it, but if you were to be taking it, if you now look back to the taxes. If you take your fourteen million, six hundred and eighty four and fourteen, you've opened the nineteen and then actually. You would currently be at seventeen point five million dollars or two point eight million dollars annually that you would have automatically been able to put those infrastructures without having to make the big decisions. And that would be just inch, 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 inching upward. So, a little bit here. To make a calculation on where we're at, we've been taking advantage of roughly forty percent. At seven point seven percent of over nineteen point nine, about forty percent. And I'm not saying you got to take it every year, but it's just, it's just a presentation, if you can take it, we wouldn't even be talking about it.
It is a reinvestment though.
Oh, it's a reinvestment into the community, yes.
Reinvestment itself, like.
Yes.
Bob, or Carol, you might know this, I know that there's plenty of fear of another bubble happening, is there any speculation about that? That, I mean, obviously, because the EAB dropped across the board in two thousand and eight, so if we're looking for another repeat, like, are we planning conservatively with that possibility, or?
Yes, my understanding from the assets, they would have known that's happening too. So if, if you take, if you came to look at your assessed values that come out of the. And you look at what you could sell your house for, there's always a wrack. And it's having a base. This is just trying to bring it up from a big gap to a small. Yeah, they're not bringing it up to people with sales and things, obviously. But it could happen, could there be something you?
No, we're, we're all, the funds are all over the place. We're all reading the same information.
Yeah.
No, there are those who are saying it's coming, it's in the, or we, we got this all. You know, who probably works for places like South Florida, there's some truth there, it's already happened down there. You know, stories change each. So unfortunate that we, we, the ridiculous in the republic, that we are being so.
Uh, yeah, and just to touch on the, uh, interest rates, once they go down, everybody's kind of, who's been waiting to buy a house, is going to be competing for those, which are going to pay a lot more for houses that really aren't that. They're going to pay a lot more, it's going to happen, so I won't say we're that every four years they, it is, so I'm sure that'll have an effect.
Well, the lack of inventory is also.
The lack of inventory.
Again, the volatility is, being in the, over seventy percent for the years, lack of inventory that's out there, right? It's not just here, it's pretty much around every block. You know, everybody bidding to get in, and they can't get in, that interest rates, people are refinancing, it's not happening, you know that. Because the straits are, based on a less than, the rates are, so the no plans, so the banks are in crisis, they have a bigger problem. That's what we, we're afraid, they're in trouble, they'll come back, they'll come back, yeah, that's the way.
Very, very good point. Moving to the next stage, there's years before we're going to. The operating, such that are going to be proposed in countless considerations. If you take a look at twenty three compared to twenty four, please inquire pension funds, you'll see how both are adjusted, actually downs slightly. Here is the general, we actually levy for it in the general fund, but then we will transfer it to the VIP for funding. We are, we are asking for council's consideration of eight hundred thousand dollars out of the chute mix, we are taking advantage of that growth. Then we've got our debt levying, and please inquire, it's pay for the POV bonds, that's roughly breaking even. And for both parks and library, we've built in a three percent increase in taxes, and again, with the salaries that we just adopted. For, for, for I. And again, with the salaries that we just adopted, um, for four, quarter five percent as well as operating increases. So the total taxes are seven hundred and forty thousand right now, but we didn't even vote being, we didn't consider it on the vote. If you turn to the next page, this is the impact on an average residential owner. And it is all belong to the government. On an annual basis, if we were to take advantage of an average six percent growth. On the average household, it would be thirty one dollars a year. Or two dollars and fifty eight cents a month. One thing that I found interesting about this effort. Just to help ease that needs, kind of like the budget plan that Jenny's been talking about for utilities. The assessor told me that sixty percent of the homeowners eschew their property. So they truly are paying this in every, every month. Happy to change what this, we take it a little bit. And then as we move through this, every hundred thousand dollars new property package. Equals about four dollars on an average home, and the four dollars is three years. Same as that eight hundred reduced, it's seven hundred thousand, could save about four dollars off of thirteen. Now, we'll go back to the spreadsheet. If we were to take the eight hundred thousand and then take a very modest growth due to the next nine years, so two hundred thousand each year. That would give us a total of seventeen million dollars for the additional property taxes. That we can pump right back into the C I P. Make a difference. And if you look at pillar number one in the pink for C I P. And you follow it along the board, recommending a million dollars to start out in twenty four. Million in twenty five, then it jumps up to two million dollars through, uh, two thousand and thirty two, and then three million dollars for getting that target number of the, of the consultants, three million dollars each of those. So that is the limit to get there. And I'm thinking, as we work our way through that, since we're kind of talking taxes, this might be a good time, what could we do with that for any of it?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, they hand out here, uh, sixteen, five, and. Hopefully, you guys have seen before, I'm just gonna go through them very, very quickly. Uh, slide number two is just payment condition rating that our consultant generated as part of the study. That was came back with, uh, two years ago, when came out to one hundred thirty five mile streets. Uh, it's all recommends that you maintain as opposed to try to chase your. Villas streets first, it's always better to spend a dollar maintaining a street. Of course, spending five dollars to reconstruct the. Later, much of all changing, you know, in your car, change your oil every three, four months instead of. Uh, our P C I is sixty two, which puts us in the oh good category. Our back up is sixteen percent, that's the percentage of streets that have A C I forward runs. And slide number four, you got our twenty twenty four projects. Uh, one, one four miles of, of the streets with the. Capital project cost nineteen three million dollars. Slide number five just showed the graphic of the location of those streets. Twenty six is the city first installed, that shows the projects as well. And in twenty five, you have, uh, twenty one million dollar capital budget. With one point three four mile streets that increases largely due to the pedestrian operation and. Saying that we hope to construct that with the fence community construction. Slide eight, again, are the project locations, the big project. A street project that here is the resurfacing of nineteenth avenue, which will be a. A good project in a street that's indeed of stuff. Uh, twenty twenty six on slide nine, uh, nine eight miles, about ten point six mile worth of. Capital projects, ten point six million dollars of capital projects. Single largest project is, uh, local streets in the old Hope neighborhood. That we get out, bail and subways there, about two million dollars to that project. Shows the location, which was instead of our original, what the discussion. Final eleven is additional projects for Carol Hall flipping out. Point one to two two over the next five years. So what we did is we went through and looked at those for the next five years. And twenty twenty four, we took that in the additional million dollars and. We are allowed to go forward with it, we will plow that into our maintenance, resurfacing, milling and resurfacing and. Starting because we only have the time given for the season. How late it is in the season to do, to do the design for whole construction. While Tony's other ground infrastructure. Twenty twenty five, we have, uh, four projects that we, the fullest, uh, three alley projects that were very poor. Uh, and reconstruction of fifty third street. For a total of two thousand two hundred and seventy feet. And, uh, that if we own our projects, we're connected. Twenty twenty six, there's just one singular large project, which is the reconstruction of thirty eighth avenue. Which is a, uh, two million dollar project, but it's a street with sale utilities and one that's a, a. Under collector street, so it's, it services, uh, higher bond traffic in your standard. Local streets, so it's one that we like to get knocked off our best, falls on every one.
Yes.
Contact from those that.
That's a good point, contact from Red. Uh, twenty twenty seven, again, another two million dollars. Four projects there, uh, two alley projects in poor condition. Uh, one resurfacing of a major collector street. Which is a market health project that falls into that I M S recommendation of trying to maintain. Existing streets as opposed to waiting for full reconstruction. And, uh, construction of forty first street with the drive to Ford Avenue. It's proposed as well, and then our final year, twenty twenty eight. Again, four more projects, one alley, two reconstructions, thirty ninth street has some bad utilities. And then, uh, it's just the balance of that drawn into, uh, asphalt maintenance. So it's a total of fourteen additional projects and approximately four miles of street board. Page fourteen kind of shows the geographic, the kind that it shows the geographic layout of those projects. See graphically where they fall. And then page, slide fifteen. Uh, shows the additional projects with additional funds overlaying the finished projects. Uh, for the free budget that we went through, build, reassemble, shows. Of these projects all the date, one another, geographically. All up, so I think they're, they're good projects, uh, you know, total, we get about, uh, seven. Seven, seven twenty miles of streets reconstructed, and it brings us close to moving the needle. As I M S recommended with maintaining the additional funds. Maintaining the system and start knocking off some of the real bad alleys. The alleys are what is really driving in condition rating, there are those great issues. Arterials and collector streets are getting better. Going out for additional surface transportation platform, funding this fall. Which will back some of those projects out as well. Trouble with those projects is that. Oftentimes, a public doesn't understand, why are you paying one street when my local street is so poor? Uh, when it's a federal fund, those projects have higher locations. And it's particularly, it's about chasing the type of, you know, hard tail.
So, right, Eric. You know, a common question in the past has been, well, you're really gonna get some of these projects, there'll be money left over, and you're really gonna put that much toward it, right? Because they, because, but it gives a big engineering time and all that, but it sounds to me like you've taken the time it takes. It costs, et cetera, to engineer something and sort of arrange the schedule where you can actually get these accomplished. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
We, we have asked three engineers into time now, two of them are, are pretty good. Uh, so we're hoping that they will get up to speed with the scores. We're gonna do everything we can to get these projects checked off and wait till. Yeah, send us that site, sending consultants. But oftentimes, the delays are, are horrible, a result of states and federal requirements that. Things that are within our control. Traffic sticking up where you drive and through twelve. It's odd, just because the world. Like facilities down in the downtown world, the things like identity. Destruction, I would do a comment. Where the, where the. This is. Yeah, that's the way I'm like, the mirror match. Uh, the state's saying that there needs to be more evolved environmental review of that project that's. Should we state that's the. I think what the, the focus on maintenance and resurfacing is, we're gonna make. Big tent, just trying to just knock off a lot of these streets that have been running on projects like that during the pandemic.
That's the fact here.
Four years, exactly. I think with history, like the sidewalks and alleys, as it used to be. They didn't, the city didn't do it, it's one of the things that over time, according to saying, said we extended the right away to take care of stuff. They used to do alleys and all. It was like, you go get your neighbors and you, you know, you get a fund like, so translation, nothing ever getting done. So that's why we're running this, leading sidewalks or just.
Any other questions or?
Barry hasn't had to ask this, but this is a thought exercise. So. Just hear me out. Alleys are some of our worst P C I rated.
Yeah, right, they're, they're generally. The asphalt alleys are twenty seventh, which is similar to thirty, thirty four, thirty four, and the asphalt or concrete alleys are much better.
Well, with that in mind, is there a world where we just say, we're going to take out the alley and put gravel back? Which is maintainable and cheaper to fill and. I sense a thought exercise.
We have gravel alleys.
But we're spending so much money maintaining these asphalt, concrete alleys that we're not even plowing.
One of the things that we do want. Shaped the pond of is having an house resurfacing program, all of that things. So with that equipment, magic going out and just doing asphalt resurfacing and that, some of the, at least that. Better maintaining those. Like, through the engine, or. For a billion dollars, we go out and, you know, we can get, uh, contract. Five, I bet, right? And for, you know, that same billion, we're getting a mile and a half, which we don't. So a lot of cities turn to doing their office service programs. Uh, alleyways, small residential streets, that collectors, that arterials. So.
One, just my question is, if, if it was one approach to fix the index, by removing some of these. Roads from it by converting it into something, I just.
So it sounds like something you'd have to spend some thinking about and gain the vehicle.
Maybe it wouldn't help if we're coming from, I hope that we had. Sure, there's just. Your high regions. We got fifteen. Just sound great.
So anybody you'd say?
Go back up for it also. Aggregate, if people want the complaints, I will rate it out, aggregate as a planning of the smaller collection system, maybe you got to check that out. You know, out there.
I was just gonna say, some people, I've gotten complaints about stuff that will happen, uh, and I've got to give the explanation that we. In the, uh, so I, I used to have on my previous house and, but you know, if you have kids, they can't play basketball right around the, but it, it's just, some people just don't like it. For a number of reasons, so I can see people who.
Once you have it.
Any further questions with this piece of the chart?
That kind of wraps up the property tax again, this is just an opportunity to, to get that P C I. Dollar number two, three, number. So that is pillar number one. The next section is our pillar number two, quality of place, which is the grunt of all remaining unfunded projects. And. Before we get into the project, I just thought I'd go through potential new revenues that we could take to attack. We talked about it back in June, that the council back in two thousand and nineteen or twenty. It was just January of twenty. Adopted ordinance for natural gas and electric franchise. So all that paperwork, the income of the opportunity, the income that is already taken care of. This plan is saying, if we were, and again, it's driven by the projects. If we were to take advantage of three percent out of the chute, from January one of twenty four. That would generate one point eight million dollars. Then if we held up at three percent through twenty five and looked at twenty six, I ended up to five percent, which is the maximum that we could do. We would have three million dollars for each of the remaining eight years, for a total of twenty eight point three million dollars over the course of ten years. With a very large significant bucket of revenue, you can actually make a serious difference. One percent for every one percent of the franchise, we should increase to six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. At the same time, if we look at the amusement tax, if we were to do a five percent increase, that would be half a million dollars a year or five million dollars. I wrote mine off to hide the problem, which holds five million dollars. For every one percent of the. And again, this one is not on our fee schedule, I'm gonna go back to franchise. With everyone in the fog cities as well as outline, people, they can come in, concerts, support those activities, and it's not just our taxpayers. It is the. Let's just for one minute go back to the franchise fee, I think you guys all had a chance to look at this. But on a monthly basis, on the franchise fees as proposed, this second line through the top. If we implement the three percent, uh, January one, that would be four dollars and ninety three cents a month. Or, I'm sorry, fifty nine dollars and fifteen cents a year. Then we could skip a year on the franchise. And then in twenty six, it would be three dollars and twenty eight cents, so now we're thirty nine dollars and fifteen cents a year. What can we do with those dollars then, if we go to the bottom of the table? N K S paid a presentation, renewed. Been the last several weeks, and again, we only have a half a million dollars in the bank right now. We're having a consultant, we're supposed to get that back next fall.
Start that project now in September. So budget type next year.
So the piece is presented, if we were to take advantage of the entire amount. That's what this is showing, you can do anything, and it doesn't just have to be for the I seven four corridor. Franchise fees, it could be citywide, you know, ongoing, it could be for anything, anywhere. But if we take a look at the buckets, now we're going down into the blue, the pillar number two, quality of place. Bob and I talked about maybe one of the first priorities. Rob and I talked about maybe one of the first priorities is to clear that land where the heritage church is. And demo it demo it for about two million dollars. So take the first couple million dollars and demo that property. So we are clearing the land, it's gonna be shovel ready to potentially start everything. Then in twenty six, it's the dark blue line up on the top. Again, we have not assigned any projects for this. But we're waiting on that study to come back. But you would have an additional one and a half million dollars in twenty six to use some. Public match to private bonds to get the project. Twenty seven would be kind of the peak here at two point five million dollars. The project and then about one point five million moving out. So if you look at the dark blue line, that's about thirteen million dollars of mixed net money. Plus the two million for heritage and we addressed the skate park, three point two million. Because it was kind of part of that presentation that Renewing had made. Left it in that bucket, but between all those lines, it's eighteen point three million dollars of new projects that will afford anything, anything, anywhere. With these presented. The next bucket is all the parks projects, she had all the information. About one point two million dollars, then some higher level portion of the tenant sports. Each and every one of the years, if you take a look back on revenues, you'll do that off like grants, cars. We're going to aggressively go and be going after about six hundred thousand a year. So we're kind of teary now in the projects so that we can hopefully take advantage of them. We got the tenant and football for two fifty and again, we've got the Green Valley Turf in there at two point three. If you look back up on the revenue side on the turf, it's the general fund loan. That's one point seven million dollars, which we talked about at the turn. That would be a payback of about seven to eight years. That project will completely pay for itself. Over that period of time, with increased revenues, reduced expenditures, and then the revenue. None of the other projects are talking about these to themselves. Then the other bucket on pillar number two is facility projects. We've got city hall, council chambers, reminding that's gonna get around for the chambers being used more. And then we would probably tie that in some of the security as well. We wouldn't spend money now, we'd be. Be more of a plan if we can even move the chambers down. I was been talking about wanting to consider renovating the lower level city hall. Right now, our best estimate is about one twenty and a half million dollars, but we don't have five dollars. And then, of course, the other huge facility project is our central fire station. And every year, as we continue to weight those tops construction go up. We are, we have built into this plan and there's a top annual packet. There's a copy of the architectural estimate on page thirty nine. But that's where when we talked in June, the council has said that early interview to talk about the fire station would be in twenty seven. If we wait till twenty seven, we're already fine with that. Down in red, we added those, the red is stats of adding them. For five percent inflation, according to their, that's where we get that twenty six to twenty eight million dollars. We have not had information on fire station because it is out of our budget. But as we look at a ten year plan, we want to have a placeholder and as we. As we progress door, we are certainly going to have a lot more. The fees as presented. Allow us to, first of all, we've got two million in the bank. We would be issuing twenty six million dollars of bonds, potentially. Bonding schedules are also attached. Starting on page. Forty. If you actually turn page forty three, we'll see that that's through the schedule. Total P and I averages dish by of two million dollars in projections at a rate of four point two five percent. We would be paying interest of about thirteen point five million over the course of twenty years. That is the P and I, who is issuing bonds. And then that next line, the P and I on bonds and two million dollars, that will be every year for the next twenty years. We've only got six years showing, but the fees that we're showing, the franchise fees and the amusement taxes. Would pay for that and require some, that's all. Downsized it, we can reduce fees, but this is all in the numbers that we have right now. It's magnificent to show you how we could do it. Then we've got a couple of unfunded projects. We've talked about it in the strategic plan to consider a solar farm and we would be looking at federal and state grants. Um as well as potentially some city money. That's unfunded right now and then one point zero five without trying to acquire any, who stops us? One point two million dollars, we don't know if that's still on your radar, but we pulled out on sheets before a year ago, two years ago. That was, you know, a kind of priority at that time. So we left it unfunded right now. So these are the projects as a starting point. If you look at the, they're in the far right corner. The fees as composed with property taxes would. Fund eighty five point six million dollars. All in. Going back to the P schedule, this is what the impact would be on homeowners. In twenty four, all in, thirteen dollars and three cents a month, that's total. Property taxes, all of the natural gas and franchise fees and all of the utility fees, thirteen dollars a month. Annual would be a hundred and fifty six dollars. And then you can see where we highlighted kind of an average, an average annual increase over the three year period. Property taxes would be going down. Franchise fees are not every single year, but it would be, would be about nine dollars and eighty one cents a month. Or an average of a hundred and seventeen dollars annually over the three year budget period. Yep, it's ten dollars a month. All in, all in, everything, everywhere. So it's a starting point of what are the council's priorities for these different types of buckets. We wanted to show you an opportunity if I was funded. And for now, we just need council to say. If you're all in, we go for it.
And Lori is ready to says to start moving this spreadsheet.
I've got a couple of things to say, but uh have, do we, can we ever get that right of first refusal available to Thomas?
I I uh I attempted to obtain it that they did the, at the time I did that, they were not tired about it.
I will. Um out of curiosity, I know that we're, this is four years now, so it's not in our immediate plan. Have we reevaluated price renovating fire station versus new construction? I say that with knowing that construction costs have gone way up before was prohibitive. Now, and I know that there is a, there is an emotional component to this. But I'm just, I'm wondering if that is worth exploring? Even if we save five million dollars, that's still a by moving.
Well, I'm trying to remember back, it's been a long time since we started this discussion, right? Actually, it's probably twenty two. I think I've had a couple of the presentation, you might remember that I really thought that cost is really boiler. She put inside that building. Build four wheel. They developed from five, six. You can always try it. Like here is the cost and material today, whether it's the rain, the glass, or the steel, it doesn't really matter. They all have a draw with two percent.
I just, I think we wouldn't be building everything versus demolition. I I just don't know if it's worth exploring or.
I mean, there'd be a cost. Budget that cost that we do have with us tonight.
Now we have Jason Sis, who's the project manager for the GIA Architects. Good dear tonight to answer any of the difficult questions that you're gonna have.
This is the single biggest project, the next two is Southwell.
As you can understand, I've never built a fire station.
So why don't you come on up and podium and answer questions?
Absolutely.
I appreciate the opportunity. Uh I know obviously renovation is one of the options. Uh when we were brought on the project, we did take a look at a full facility, uh location study as well. Uh the current facility is actually not in the correct location in the base of your operations and future expansion. So that is a consideration that would happen. That that is a concession that would that. Uh in terms of the existing facility, yes, infrastructure, I've been through it. Will hold me to everything, please. Uh but yes, the infrastructure is aged. There's a lot of issues pertaining to clearances, access. Uh and overall, you are short of about probably twelve thousand square feet. In ideal programmatic space. If you were to just try to renovate the space that you have. I would just quickly run in numbers over there as you were talking about it. Uh roughly, I would have said you're probably in the eight, nine million dollar range and then you have the X off costs on top. Uh so that would be more of a construction number and that's not any, any additional square foot operation. Then to add that extra twelve thousand space, it's where if we had even a room on that ability.
That is, that is on that site is part of the trial.
And the history is, when we moved the police out of there back. Twenty years ago, they said, well, this building should be torn down because they used to park cars on the roof there. Back in the seventies and maybe sixties, seventies and eighties, when there's a lot of snowstorm, a lot of salt. Through the years, went down through that that building and they said, this building's fresh, you can't stay there. Well, then after they got in that building, new police station, the fire department's like, well, what are we? Yesterday's one job, we want, we need a building. And they do deserve a building. And they said, you know what? We're gonna remodel it. So it didn't get remodeled. There has been one, at least one remodel of the building. And that building can't think much more of remodels. That'd be a good remodel.
Where is the crack?
Um so there is, the study is a little bit vague in the idea that it literally puts a spot. But it's ideally about taking consideration of open spaces, available properties and having enough space to look at. Uh it's on, right now, the general vicinity that says station one for district one is on Seventh and.
Fourth Avenue and Seventh Street.
That happens to be part of where in that general area, after that, the planes, looking at different properties. And being able to walk backwards in terms of improvements, not catchments, uh would be taken into consideration or weighed against everything.
So I can appreciate the reasons for moving forward with a new building and a new location and all those things. My biggest concern is twenty years of paying. I I think twenty years is a really long time. Maybe it's average for municipal buildings. Uh I think they'll take a very long time to have large payments. Um and so I don't know how to overcome that, but I just thought I'd share that.
Uh my just a question, when we get the police department to stay a few months for twenty years or how long?
Yeah, you could be educated on the average length of some of the projects.
Mostly municipal projects that I've got through the past, so. Here is. Uh fifteen, twenty years is pretty normal.
And at the time. Built a new library. Plan, they build a lot of stuff there. So they're bonding now. This is only one facility. You know, twenty years ago, like I said, we built all these new buildings. Get bonded out of the moment. Got paid off, we got the buildings, we finished the plant, and now we're doing all of this now.
Other than that, we did not do in the cities, we did not really build on capital reserves, one of our builders did grace our vehicles. Vehicles are really well protected when it comes to our physical infrastructure, our actual building, we do not. Now, as a result, we'll get a situation where you have to address the need provided. We have the body capacity, but we don't want to bump the next along. So we look at alternative revenue sources such as the the franchise fee, which they started to progress with in two thousand nineteen. About twenty, that never pulled the trigger, because it's tiny. So I wasn't there with the fighting game there.
I was just gonna ask, um we we currently have not came off any of the property. Are we?
Yes, we do have, we have several, but I think almost every year we're carrying, but eight to ten years or two, two, about eight years, I think. Yeah, primary, I believe those have now made out of this year or last year. And then we've got a couple of other infrastructure bonds. But yeah, within the next seventy eight years, those are going to all.
Yes, with in regards to uh downtown, that morning, the heritage church. We don't know what, but in the open space, you know, so that could be a cost that we really have. We don't know it's have to be out of sight at all.
And that one, I mean, nobody has sung that song yet. That's why I'm hey, I was able to thought. I mean, not a lot of people in trident, it's all you may expect to see the public standing to play that out. People believe with the. Yeah, not now, but they do with the building. Well, then are those who like preserve a part of the building, uh support and the talent, exceed that plan as well. So till we get further along in the process of MBS gang, everybody can answer it. Have they had a place for the bill for that cost?
That's why you see here this line. That whole thing, right in twenty six, you're starting to, when you decide.
Speaking of. Here, I wanted to ask. What is our call for keeping that in place pre demolition? I mean, I know there's some rental locations in there and they're anywhere near breaking even.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, it's a, it's like a thousand dollars right now. Red dragon taxes and.
Paid uh last month was four thousand. A hundred dollar dollar. That's what they carry annually.
You put it in because of two.
Other questions or comments, I think.
I I would just like to say, I don't know if this is far too much, but I think you're, I'm not a big fan of the. Turf project this fiscal year, doing all the legendary strengths that we have. Like the, you're anyone else? Rate or disagree on that one?
Yes, we're talking about the.
Read about it.
I, I agree. I think about the other, uh, funding, uh, to speak to the part for issues that, for funding, uh, we should, we should. We should take care of tennis courts and the property.
I disagree. Disagree. I would just say, and I don't have any dog in this fight, but I do think we need to do this. Reserve a lot of tournaments. Sarah said, here, there's a tournament, if I want, hey, there's anything that I want.
The tennis court is supposed to be jumping to tournaments, right? The tennis court.
Yeah, definitely not as much. I mean, right now, we have one pick of them, or one pick of alternate, I mean, we have a couple small ones, but we're local.
But the big one that was mentioned, the Boston Dinger, both from here, so they're.
Yes, that would be a four day regional USA Pick of All Tournament that would bring in roughly about as of May. For the six.
What are we talking about, though, the price of the, I've asked of the tennis court being able to burn that, or just by resurfacing the court rather than doing the fire? Entire thing.
And I'm a resurfacing one. Is that, will that still meet the needs for going into the larger church? Or was that something that they would look at that and say, no?
You know, when I spoke with the gentleman from USA Pick of All, um, he said it would be better to resurface than to do like a sports court. Or even though the sports court is the module assistant of USA Pick of All. But he also doesn't know the, what our courts currently. Those courts are fifty plus years old. And I mean, they're, according to all other courts, when they came and inspected it last fall a year ago, they said their courts will aren't that bad considering what they've seen in other cities. Uh, but, you know, I personally, I definitely see worse courts before, but there definitely needs to be some.
So will the resurfacing do the job against the volume? Knowing of course it will last for less time.
Yeah, so right now, we probably could have resurfaced the courts last year, and right now, we're on year six of seven. So really, it's probably a four to five year fix, so five to seven year fix. Talk to anyone in the racket community, they would say that it's, it's. And they're not.
Uh, a little question about the Green Valley. Uh, is it only affected when the river floods, or is it when you have a lot of rain?
Well, it's, well, it's mostly rain. I mean, if you look at the amount of flooding we've had in the last ten years up there, I think there's a little bit of, maybe two events up there. But it's really more because we're in the flood zone area that the water just, it's. So with the turf, there's underground, they may believe that as it rains, the water drains off the, the turf and it goes up to persistent.
It's more than just like a train.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, great. April through July, middle of July, Green Valley's just, it's. Once, and then you take a break during the summer for a bit, and then fall, fall starts in, it's, you know, four to six days.
But I mean, we're gonna vote on each of these items individually. Fire station, you know, poured a lot of money already in downtown. We've got some empty buildings that we need to talk about. We're not doing that tonight.
I think they were spoken to some discussion about priorities. I mean, they don't need people in a bunch around something here once in there, so that's why you said motions are okay. However, we, we usually do leave ourselves multiple weeks to be looking at this, and we have gone through on those budget days, right? And on item by item, with the green on these big projects especially. But that, I think that was your point, was if you had a motion and you took that, if you say, just say you took this off the table there by your foot, then you would be able to show us what that would do overall. That, that's why you better.
Better than.
Yes, it's true.
Before you get into the discussion about fire stations, tennis courts, footsoff, and other items that were here, you know, none of those work without revenue. So you really, as a council, have to address whether or not you're willing to use the growth dollars. If you're identified, and the franchise fee, a quarter of a dollar, three percent, as well as the amusement tax, which, you know, the amusement tax, we, we issue it, the city goes right back to your revenue. They have a five percent amusement. We collected, then give it, then use it for gambling. That's the way it works. But this would be on top of that, predominantly paid by the track, paid for by the side users. Right? That's the beautiful part of that. Twelve thousand people show up, and guess what? All ships get them, coming up with big events. So you have to approve the funding sources, and then once you agree your funding sources, now you know the chips you have on the table. Now you guys start negotiating chips.
Oh, and did you submit, did you submit an, uh, grant for the turf in Friday? When will we find out if we are able to buy?
Actually, just got an email out yesterday, so they're hoping to, you know, or at least the city's new December fifteenth, or three months sooner. We did it last year.
Just December fifteenth?
Yes.
So here's how that works. People put it into budget, and the grant comes in, you have a budget, the grant doesn't come in, you don't spend the money. It's, there's no arm up.
No, no, no.
You're committing dollars to that outside of the grant.
Tax increases for some of the project that may not get done. That's why we wanna, that's why they want to make decisions about some of those things, so they can hit the right, um, level, et cetera. And then that's the other side of it, that's.
So if we don't get the grant, could it be, uh, we obviously got through the turf, but then we move the tennis name. Footsoff up into twenty four, because it's mostly exer.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, you have that budget.
That's what I, it makes sense, yeah.
Well, this, this one you have.
Uh, Eric, would resurfacing, and I, I hear you, Bob. I have a question first. Um, would resurfacing still qualify as further amusement, so? Project, I was absent last week, so I missed the question.
Uh, so the hundred and fifty thousand to, uh, resurface would just be building existing cracks that are on the facility, uh, and repainting, and repainting the points that will not, uh, if you're talking about changing two tennis courts over to footsoff, it would not, uh, that would, it would cost much more. You'd have to remove the plus to the tennis, fill, fill the, uh, the holes, you have to put, say, uh, the holes.
I, I remember there being a, a savings when they were bundled.
Yeah, so if you built, if you built the tennis courts and the footsoff courts all at the same time, the footsoff courts came out to like two hundred and ten thousand, where if you're building them separately, like we are seeing, it's between five hundred and six hundred. Now, if, if that funding is not available to do ten courts, we could do eight courts, the existing foot, you know, footprint of tennis, and split them out into, you know, soccer on one side, tennis in the middle, pickleball on the, you know, right side, or, you know, tennis and footsoff, you know, we split it in half. You know, there are ways to work with them, but we can't do all ten courts. I think you, two years ago, we were proposing maybe doing two soccer and, and six tennis, so I don't know. If, uh, who asked part board of the citizens right now, we would do eight or six tennis courts, I think you could last and then try to do a mixture of a few sports there.
Right, so I think we are, I mean, Adam, yes.
I do want to clarify two projects. And you do look at the revenues on the top, and you'll see the police, the death of a brand, or the LTV, one point five million dollar revenue, circle that, if you remember how we. Now circle it down below in the B, police integrated traffic safety. There's your one point five. If that, that revenue, that brand pays for that one point five, so if you take the one point five out, like say, the revenue's going away, so that was neutral. Okay, the same goes for the turf project. We've got, we track up on the revenue, and you'll see the off-let grant, that first six hundred thousand, circle that one, and then circle the one point seven million dollar loan from the general fund. That was just a loan because we have excess reserves, not excess, we have available reserves that we can loan that out. If you take the Green Valley turf project down below of two point three out, then you take the revenues up from the top, so it's not like you're seeing a property tax dollars or franchise fees. We were going to be paying for that project with any of those, this loan from the general corporation. So if you look at those, take those two projects and neutral. The reason we put them on here is because if the grants fell away, the council still wants to try to build them in, the funding is in a different source other than the one that we, we're withholding for.
And I think it makes sense, as far as pulling back enough with, with that same revenue place, except that even with the general fund loan of turf project, that's still money we're putting out that is then being paid back from the regular part budget over the next eight years. So it's still mu, that one is still money going out. It's not truly revenue. It's revenue neutral to the excess fee conversation. And if we don't use that on turf project, we could use that approach on a different part project potentially or elsewhere, but it's not truly revenue.
I mean, I looked at Eric's, and if you talk about, it was gonna generate additional revenue. That, and if we don't do the project, the revenue won't be there, and then we are going to reduce expenditures because you don't need the seasonal staff for.
That stuff, why neutral? Cause we're proposing that was gonna increase, uh, brought up taxes, or taxes brought in by about fifty thousand, so again, over, I mean, I think we were gonna cut about a hundred and sixty thousand for the project, so it's not quite.
And I agree that it was long term, I think it will reduce costs. I mean, I agree, because if it has a long term, so, but it's that, like, is that short term? It still is that cost.
Yeah.
And it's still being paid from the annual part, but it just gets, oh, help up with that one top.
Hey, I think we do have to get some feedback on that's on the, um, increase kicking, kicking, kicking the.
Growth.
Growth, that was the word, the growth, and then with some feedback on these, uh, and then we should probably do the next thing.
I have a favor of catching increased growth. I think when we look at our property tax, I've long been one who said we should look to be, uh, hitting consistent levy rates, or as consistent as we can, even though it's about to shift a little bit, but, uh, I also, the only hesitancy I have with this year is we have any idea of what, uh, impact the, the perennial, particularly the rolling township, uh, I, I, or, well, or in Southwood. There's gonna have different impacts, different market to have, uh, depending on how well the assessors have done that cats.
I do not have those evaluated, we're supposed to have at the end of all, and it was supposed to be last Friday, and now she said it's over for Friday. But, um, we've taken the, we aren't taking high of what she's saying. About six percent average, I think it's due to some of that underweight.
And combined areas, additional whatever we're doing, there could be properties with significant swings in both directions. Of course, that always has both directions. Uh, and I don't think we can help that, it's just.
I do appreciate the idea that this go, this growth vote under Ruckin Streets, because this, if we pop the bottle up, we know it's an issue for our residents, not like that, I'm looking for maintenance in a lot of ways. And when I say that, I recognize, look, we have to do that in the fire station, that too, so, and yeah, I appreciate the encouragement. That will help us, but especially like, give you any growing going to the streets. Others, yes.
I, I endorse, except taking the growth, I am a fan of the amusement tax for all the reasons spelled out. The, uh, I like the franchise fees, but maybe not at the rate. I would prefer that they could move some projects, and then just see where they fall, so that we're not hitting residents with so much all at once. Uh, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks a year, I think, it, you know, it's still a lot of money for a lot of people. So anything that we can cut a little bit, I think, that's a good thing. But the other two, I'm probably, probably.
So, do you have any other thoughts? Do you have any sense that, that the whole inn is not where everyone is at? It's not, unless, unless I'm the one you are.
Let's do it all. No, uh, but there, there is, uh, this is very ambitious, right? So I don't know how this compares to different arrows, maybe from the city, but I also feel that, I imagine there's regret. I know when we talked about the previous, uh, individuals from Parkport did have regrets about the soils. I imagine if we don't do a nice fire station, we might regret that we have to build a bigger one in a shorter amount of time. So there could be like some longer term problems that we might not anticipate by one bit. But I, I guess, and maybe this is kind of a question for you, Bob, with your experience. Do you envision all these projects, saying, we say, hey, let's do it all? Is this something that, at current staffing levels, the talent, everything, that you have the full confidence that we can totally tackle? And then also the economy, you never know what's gonna happen.
Video crystal ball. I should sort of see through it. You know, I, I think, and I'll speak, experience here. When I got here in twenty one, guys were going to have a transition. You came up with a strategic plan, which I think I even said back then. It was like super, super efficient, eighty-five different projects of different scopes across the apartments. And, uh, and on top of that, at least another forty rectums over the last eight years on that, that needed to be dealt with. And we did it. We weren't bullshitting, but we did it, and we're, we're, you know, we managed to get things done. We picked a lot of the low hanging fruit. We really did. We nailed the low hanging fruits as quick as we could. So I don't think, I don't think it paralyzed us. I think we could do that, you know? Arcs is gonna wrap up their big pool project next summer, which they're really a great job of. Uh, and that's really giving back to me. What happens, uh, if the footsoff, tennis courts, and of course, the, uh, Green Valley project? You know, they all have merits, politically, they all have merit. Politically, people wanted those footsoff courts. Politically, people wanted those tennis courts. Politically, people wanted that pool, and, you know, you could say there's only four hundred people who came out and shouted for a skate park. But, uh, but they're there. Those four hundred people know that we're four hundred people, and those four hundred, obviously. So we put ourselves out there as independents, and we said, if they accept, we would like to do it, engage citizens for it. But I look at this, do we have the staffing levels to do the work? Sure. I mean, you know, we've got a great team of people, you know, they, they go the extra mile, because what they thought. Uh, and Paris taking that more of the top, we have a record, recognizing that. Tony's been in backlog projects, you know, the biggest issue is going to be that, all the other stuff, I mean, that pipes, I mean, those are things that are just standard thing. You know, what happens with the I seventy four, the run corridors? That is the greatest unknown sitting here today. We have no idea what it's gonna cost. We could tell all day, let alone what will build it. So I think in a lot of respects, the only thing we know is, you gotta building that. So I think in a lot of respects, the only thing we know is, you gotta building that and be done a paid and maintained. It's not, it's not free. So tearing it down or keeping it is, you know, we wait, studying to be done for one more year, eat that boss. I don't probably recommend that sort of dip. Might push back any demo costs on that for, so at least that's all. Think we need to at least know by next, this time next year, a lot of better idea where that project is going. What they're proposing, they're basing on community and what citizens, what you're in, what staff input, they hold. Think that one I would push. I would not rush into that at this point. You know, as far, as far as the, uh, post office, they take it off. You know, we, we did not want it to fall into the hands of a private party. Like what happened with Carnegie once we sold it. It's nothing's ever happened to us since the day they went to the new life there. That city like that was old, nine to decade. Thirteen years. It's really what was pushing us to look at all of that, all of it, because it's significant to the community. It's still there. It's still for sale. Obviously, you can punch up and, you have been buying it on two million dollars. They weren't negotiable over there. Uh, so I, I'm just, I'm interested to take it off. Solar farm has a life of its own. That is a, a self-recoverable project. Like generate revenue, like the utility. That one, I would not worry about the status. You know, I thought when that, at like this moment, we're working on it, we're researching it, we're waiting to see. The deck of money is going to be great for the solace and for all the work that your staff has to do all that. Going off the list, the fire station is, is one of those, you know, that's huge to that things. But it's a development that twenty years ago, probably we shouldn't have. So you inherited, like we all do in this industry, from my experience everywhere. For maintenance issues, whether their roads, whether their water is sooner than strong. You're not going to pick up the same responsibilities with just that bad job there now with the low hanging fruits that captured. So I will, I will pick the projects that are most important to you as a councilman. That you feel that there's revenue, some A forms, they will have the impact of looking for. For people feeling good, I mean, roads, roads, roads. Well, it's, they complain about the roads, right? That's in the challenge, the roads complaining about it. Uh, so there has to be that focus. You know, this whole list under MKS gate, the skate park, you know. They still keep the skate park in the front, in the forefront. And why? It's where you, as this council or previous council, you committed resources to bring in one of the top design countries in the country. And we've reached out already now and I got the signature that we'll accept those. So that project gets something. I think that it's not going to be impacted by the MKS statements. Because it's already been designed based upon what's, this stuff by the American Institute, which this council, former council fully endorsed. So there's certain things that are still easy to lash out to. And that's a big answer, but there's a lot on the table. These are big rocks. Yeah, that's your, these are all those, yeah, they're all those.
Anyone else have the thoughts?
I know this is completely out of order, but we know anything about Ken's school, because actually we should be a flag or like just theirs. Got a big old school center.
I'm still pushing hard on the manual arts building. They, they're getting a little skittish on what they are starting to foresee as the renovation costs over there. The housing authority, they're still interested. They still want to buy it. But they're saying, just give us some time to fully investigate what the investments will take. Turn it into project, a viable project.
What's that got to do with Ken's school?
Well, what does that have to do with it? It's just that it's just another one of those buildings that we're selling. And right now, nobody's investing. We're having a hard time getting people to try investors in JCPenney property. So that's not penciling very well either. So as we look at that building, somebody's going to have to pencil. Somebody's going to commit an action to be able to turn it into something. Or you're going to end up having to take it down and just allow it to return to nature.
Well, we had one, at one time, we had money to take it down. Yeah, take it down, but we have some money set aside in there. The guy says, they're going to give it to us. That was.
Oh, no, no, that guy, that guy, no. That's the same owner of the manual arts school that, you know, he owed us fifty thousand, thousand fines. That's how we acquired the properties from the food force.
Right.
But there was never money set aside to do anything, wanting to clean it out versus demolish it. There were a lot of debates, should it be demolished or should it die?
I myself and the residents of that area, like a third. I've said that many times before, I'm saying again, it probably doesn't have a place in the speeding limits.
It does, it does. It's filed in my office with the kid and still.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the Green Valley Turf project.
Is there a second? The Castro discussion?
I, I would probably, uh, well, I, I don't play baseball, softball, whatever. But if there are tournaments and there is, uh, we did say a long time ago, any projects that are generating revenue. Really need to make a point of, of supporting or focusing on it. It's going to affect future tourism. I, I think we can, we can look at it from that points.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I don't disagree. I also feel that at best this is net neutral. Considering the, uh, and maybe every ten years replacement cost that weren't factored into the original estimates and the county council. I just don't think this is the year. I would love for us to be in a better position or be addressed, addressed.
And also the numbers, it's like seven million or, I mean, one hundred thousand dollars more than what we presented. Remember that the rate that originally it said was going to be?
That's, that's, but that's, we also have.
Right, like six hundred thousand, this is, that's with the grand. But the number that you presented to us is, um, at the last meeting. Was usually one point six, not the two point three, right?
So for clarification, the two point three is the six hundred thousand plus the one point.
Or is that just the new estimate?
That, that's the same. It's just, this is.
Let's lift the bar.
So, yeah, so the total projects, two point three with the obsolete grand or two point, or two million three hundred fifty thousand. Osslet grand, we take it off six.
Sorry, okay.
So our net cost is one seventy.
Uh, I'm in agreement that I, I think this is the one I would keep because it is, it has potential to be funded partially and make revenue. It is going to bring some of that along.
Any further expansion?
Yeah, I would say just hold off on it. We have other projects to put forward. So I would.
Okay, so, um, I could ask a question of Leo, um, there's a motion to take it out of the budget today. And it said for balloon, not putting it back, but if we do anything, um, the financial station will put it. Just chatting, because sometimes you can't think of the same old strategies.
Uh. I am right out of that sound. Everybody else says that they're going to do like, oh, that I get this idea. I just, I, I understand, I don't think I might go to take it out. But at this, I think, I think we need to nail down the revenue side of the goals. But knowing, of course, that, I mean, we are going to have this conversation a couple more times. I just.
Further, uh, all the favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
All the person, O'Brien?
Yes.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hey.
Murphy?
Good.
Mercedes?
May.
Timmyn?
Hi.
Finch?
Right.
Three I's, four N's. So there remains the weather. Thank you. Anything further on item eight point two? If there's nothing, I'll entertain a motion for a five minute recess.
Don't move.
Motion by Timmyn second and I'm, he is all favor.
Hi.
I'm sorry, yes, the post.
Two.
I just have it when you get by there.
Probably down south, I look. I was texting, I was. We gotta come back. They're throwing the money to back them. And maybe, but it's just that there's your blood. It sounds like a property tax. Let's get to that. Open those. Like we just tell. These kids at all places going and then it's such a test. I know, so I think. But if you have a, like, citizen, they would say, R C I's. But shows them our balance sheet. You're probably not Monday, you're playing. Well, or we could say. You mean, you're big on. That party could be like, I'm saying. Also, I actually have tickets. I got tickets, um. That's, that's our way to start. Way in Illinois playing, could be fresh.
It's a little bit of a down with the property prices in here. And the franchise needs to, like, put level. They were almost all right. See, I was spacing out, I didn't even hear the second. I heard Timmyn's and I made real second, then I like this. But I was under twenty six, I couldn't even. Mayor's right, and gets close to that clock, it's still hard. People do, people do so good.
It's probably the way that it forward work, case decision.
You don't want to redo something. If they can see it up there.
Five minutes, sir.
So did you go to the building?
I did.
I didn't need to go, I would definitely do that. I, so I'm going to try to go make sure. Make sure I don't. I knew it's a party, I really. And then depending on how many are left, usually. And then we. But I said Jim had a few signs, so I don't think it must be. It must be a. He was letting bank money.
What are these girls?
Yes. The one one's.
Well, like, yeah, it's happening. If you want to take it, we try to, because it's something.
We get together.
We don't want you.
Same guy.
Get everybody back please. Get everybody to actually explain. I don't need to do anything else to say, I'll just, we're back in session. I'll put it six. Thank you, everyone. Soon. Okay, perfect. Um. So before we move to eight point three completely. Uh, staff really needs to know if they continue to build this budget with what is on this page. In terms of the assumption of this tax levy and going, going, excuse me, taking the growth and it all going to streets. And then it's the franchise fees that they go to the back. You have every opportunity to change those numbers that you mentioned to me. And I think you were saying you weren't sure about the three, but.
Right.
But are you at all comfortable giving them any feedback on the situation? Or do they assume you're okay with this and they end up finding out in October?
Um, could we do some sort of like a persona, a person that earns forty thousand dollars a year living in New York? Buy a house that, that's, uh, ten thousand dollars per second. Uh, and then maybe somebody who earns a hundred thousand. Uh, if what could this mean to them? A year and the next year, just, because then we're bringing up like that, that. Getting an idea of how to affect.
Is that something that would be possible?
I've done that before.
I mean, this is down to every child. It's gonna mean that less than that, the franchise fee will be paying for every. Uh, no, it's not, so sorry. Yeah, the franchise fee, the best that mid-American can come up with is an average, an average bill. Figure how that franchise fee is going to be less. Smaller homes is going to be less.
And then it's based on consumption.
It is based on the consumption.
Consumption basically. Like water.
Well, this is in, this is in the average, so. It really would just be to say it's going to be up and down based on those.
Well, and, and if you do, if you say you own this before, I'd be curious as to how it works. But the assumption is different than what your house value is, yeah, property value, all right?
Yeah.
And whether you have any mortgage or something, or you're trying to have a whole bunch of merit.
Sorry, just a follow. So you said you've done stuff like that before?
Yeah. You're asking us to come up with a calculation based on somebody making forty thousand dollars a year. Now, again, think about that. I mean, what are they paying? Are they paying federal state taxes? We don't have all the details. We're looking at a, kind of a global assumption. Now, if you people are like, we make forty thousand dollars a year. Now, if people are like, we make forty thousand dollars a year.
I think that maybe would help if we knew what mid-america considers average, is that a two-bedroom home? Uh, twelve-hundred square feet, you know, I think same thing based on the water. Is that a, you know, is that two person household, is that five-person household? That would kind of give us an idea of, you know what I mean, of how people would fall in, I think, more than income. Even that, yeah, is based on utilities are based on the size of your home and the.
Under a fixture.
Right. Right.
And this.
We. Nope, you're fine.
We can ask that, but as I recall, when we contacted mid-american, this is basically on usage of utilities. If you have a gas that you could, if a house that's not.
It's under too efficient.
Efficient, efficient, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Efficient home, and this is average usage across everyone, high-low, everywhere. Average. I don't think we'll have it written down by a two-bedroom. I'll just do the usage. Consumption.
Monthly consumption is what they're basing it on.
Yes, I'm sorry, but beyond just this, like all the other increases together. How could that impact some of the league uh? Any any influence? Like underwater. Waste water. Well.
That would be different than what we're showing here.
Yes, uh, but more like how could this number for an individual who makes forty thousand dollars, uh, because it might, yeah, I guess more than an individual.
I don't know, Tony, maybe you know, I don't know.
Is there anything like?
Is there a way to hit the consumption in that?
Yeah. I'm a, I understand what you're getting at, and I think if your council plans. I would pray that if you stray from the the except like professional presentation of data, then you end up with data that doesn't mean the same as what you're trying to get. That makes sense because there's so many variables that go into it, which is why they had to do it this way, um, work by property, right, I think that's how you're saying it, yeah, but that. So, well, again, that's first.
Well, I have to go to comment that not everyone who was like, oh, we're not, I mean, so it can affect somebody who rents their home differently than somebody who because they're not paying paying pay property back.
Right, license fees, they would be paid license.
Well, I thought that he wanted to talk.
Just to talk like.
Yeah, I thought he wanted to talk.
I think this. I think using the averages in our. Rather, if we were to do it, the only way you could do it, like, you don't have a song. Grand marketing, I know what you're doing, but you would instead do it, uh, this is what a two-person home would do or a five-person, like, it wouldn't be, I I didn't do anything at all, it's only about like home size or usage, but even that, I think there's so many variables, yeah, sure, you could draw the pictures, but this average catches us that one in the middle place.
Timmy.
So, if if, should I wait or finish this?
Yeah. Okay.
Um. I was thinking if demolition, I know we've budgeted demolition for two years, but we're gonna wait. Why don't we maybe then explore uh pulling back franchise fee to one and a half percent, perhaps percentage is allowed. Really work with.
I was gonna tell you, were you eight or was it five?
So if we did one and a half, that brings us down to ninety, ninety-two-three-one. And that pretty much negates that demolition fee compared to your uh for this year and then that would also affect next year, then if we went up to three and twenty-six. It's three years out, so we have a little bit of time to kind of decide how those numbers are. Like their thoughts about, I'm just trying to do the sticker shots.
I I agree that we're going after a lot of utility usage, all of those, and I understand why we have to do that with our own operated utilities. Right, we are not going to be taking the stand down the road, especially with the improvements and the environment that are coming. So at the same time, then the franchise fee on top, that feels like a lot.
Yeah.
Not just feel like a lot to people all of us, and I I have concern.
Well, I will say, appreciate the idea of this step step increase in that if it's not successful, though, it's because it simply mirrors some of the things that you're doing as well that are part of a reasonable um reasonable even approach to getting. To the percenter. Any other thoughts on franchise fees? Is there a motion?
One percent equals six hundred.
So I'll make a motion to reduce the franchise fees for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five to one point five percent. And then three percent uh and five point six.
Your second? My second. Thank you, President Murphy, more discussion.
I guess I guess we go back to what we made Carol's presented budget to us. I guess all in. What do we cut now? Cut back?
His example was the demolition of um Carrot End, we made two years.
That's it, uh, with with this current budget, yes, and and we could retort that cost. Would eventually have to find demolition money if we decided to demolish, you know, that's it.
Again. You know, that's the answer.
But it's essentially preserve the other things in the budget, they evolved and it's all been except for that.
Yeah, and my assumption too is all the skate park is contingent on the hot line grant twenty-five, which we can set next year.
Anything further? This motion to, again, it is franchise fees at one point five for twenty-four, twenty-five and further, um, on paper?
Hi.
Any post? What should pass me in this? Anything further on these uh parts of the budget?
Thanks. I that's basically our ticket sales.
Staff would like to understand your thoughts on that.
Um, um. Uh. I just gotta ask, that's on ticket sales that.
The vibrant.
Vibrant, like, you know, happen. Like the, is, and that's not applying other places?
No, this is strictly, it's gonna be written strictly from Mike.
Okay, and then the question came in and, all right, so, um. I would say the only thing I would say on going a little way to five, of course, it's lower than I don't know. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but you know, there are other others of these taxes that that we collect that are maxed out already. And we would be maxing it because. Correct?
I think full of damage.
So, right, I can understand it because you want to get a lot done, I also can see again sort of not playing against the security. To all taxes. All the way with.
Actually, maybe I'm in, I believe the amusement tax is not advanced to five percent, we can go like on Chicago, you'll see. Here, remember, do you remember?
Was it like thirty percent?
I can't.
It was huge.
Not very. Oh, no, 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 no. No, it's not.
Thirty.
Not five-point B, it's not mapped, it's five.
Okay, so I better want to do franchises, yeah, okay, yeah, anyway. Point three.
I'm I'm okay with it, if every concert, every game that you go to, you get all these prices on there for the taxes for cities, they, this, that, and the other, uh, people are kind of.
I agree, I think that.
Let's get access to people.
Yeah.
Yeah. They they.
All right, uh, I'm so sorry, was there a motion for that?
Okay, do you have anything?
Okay. Make a motion to have any of these taxes five percent.
Second.
All right, yes, that's to me, they passed through, um. All leader.
Hi, I'm like.
Yes, if I may, uh. Are you comfortable if you were to bring back a representative of the franchise to give early next week, so the ninety-day lag is affected January first? And the same with the amusement acts, we start working on the order before you.
Good, see ya.
I I would caution, this is part of our building the budget, and we don't fully pass that until the end of October. You may want to make further changes, so as a person, like, guys, this council, I I would say I would not. Watch that.
Let me just move them.
It's like we're not gonna. Do that.
We will do.
I I you moved to improvement now, but you still have time to think through this budget, I don't, this is a huge budget and major decisions that are departures from what we've done in the last two years. I think that there is a place for caution and to use the weeks we have before we make final budget books. Yes, this week.
And the motion we made was to approve using that for setting up. Right? So we might go into October and we could be.
Raise it all.
Reset all what we're doing tonight.
Potentially, we have that.
That's one.
Yeah, that's right.
It might be. It's been in our business.
Uh, anything further? Okay, thank you, I think we need to move to eight point three now. Who's in charge of that, this will be us?
Yeah.
That's why we can see the budget request.
Twenty-four.
We need to, we need need to address this. Okay.
Are the version.
Yeah, there's a steady version when you attack the head that basically fire pension, considering last wage. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. So as you know, uh, the city historically has done a number of things related to outside organizations that we provide funding to along with the other cities, Quad City, Quad Hill, I said, and the other, right? So I kind of want to go through who they are, first of all, who they are, what kind of money we have budgeted for in each case. So, uh, probably our oldest partner on this list is probably Renew Moline. Going back to the time when it was first created, and in the case of Renew Moline, uh, we have provided sustaining funding to that organization with about seventy-five thousand dollars historically. Up until twenty twenty-two, that they started to change because of ARPA. Started to change because of ARPA, and they started to change because of direction they're going with our downtown. So that original funding was coming from the TIPS, so you know, seventy-five thousand sustaining support that you gave them from the TIPS by one, five, eleven, twelve, thirteen, actually. Portion coming from each of those that was going to Renew Moline. Uh, that number in twenty twenty-two increased by seventy-five thousand because of ARPA dollars that were available, you know, so in twenty twenty-two, they received a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that's kind of where we started out with them, at the same time, uh, twenty twenty-three, made decision to move forward with several changes. Part because of where M C B C was at with Moline Development Corporation. Back in twenty-one, early twenty-two, the executive director left, and the question then became, what are we gonna do with the organization? Organization traditionally survive off of revenues that were generated, sales of properties that the city secured through the efforts, so from Law Division and the Department of Enforcement Division, both Health and Sons and General Box, so those properties would be turned over to them, they would go and have had everybody. Have those properties, they would sell those, and whenever revenue came off of them, it was never any significant, they would take that money try and fund the executive director with that money, hard time. So that's part of the story, you know, and then we, um, we had, and in twenty twenty-two, council at the time received a request from the then chairman of the CDC, seventy-five thousand dollars, and they they granted the Moline CDC a hundred thousand dollars. So that's what they had in twenty-two. Moline Center didn't get any ARPA dollars of this, as you know, they've been around forever, well, um, but their but their funding comes from the general fund, twenty-five percent, and then there's two SSAs, S S A five and S S A six represent the bulk of your downtown. That is kind of the boundaries of the Moline Center, um. They were funded mostly by seventy-five percent S S A funding and twenty-five percent general fund in twenty-two. And then, uh, let's move to twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, we rolled back what we were funding to Renew Moline down to seventy-five thousand. So it was no more ARPA dollars that were going there and sustained them, it was basically tip revenues going in. Remember tips, we were one closed, so we're down five, eleven, twelve, fifteen. Uh. As far as Moline Center, we had to make some decisions operationally, because we don't, even though we're chamber members, we don't, we don't pay the chamber money to manage our. Like that, or now Rock Island, or Gavin Ford, we efficiently use those, but Rock Island was recently joined. So we don't cut a big check with the chamber, I mean, for that next, right? So we decided we were gonna go on our own. The Moline Center as well as Moline CDC over to renew subject to renewed for improvement, we did it, absolutely did. So what ended up happening is in twenty-three current year, seventy-five thousand uh with the tips to renew. Hundred and twenty-five thousand went to Moline Center, which was basically the S S A dollars making up seventy-five percent, or about, let's see. About ninety-some thousand, and about thirty-one thousand are general fund, the hundred and twenty-five thousand is what sustains Moline Center. Those of which comes from local businesses that sell the pose of the additional tax that's being collected. Then you have the Moline CDC, which, you know, see hundred thousand twenty-two, and in twenty-three, we budgeted seventy-five thousand. They were in the process of basically reinventing themselves, which is what they did, had a presentation of that, and from Janelle, uh, of renew. So all told, you have those, uh, looking back to the others that we've found, we have the Quad City Chamber of Congress, which we you know, historically funded since it merged, and one day, probably, we've been funding the Illinois Quad City Chamber, but that's just past history. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we write the chamber with fifty-nine thousand dollars change, twenty-three, we budgeted sixty thousand, three seventy-nine, which is about two percent for them. And and there's like a two percent, there must be a formula that we're working with, they get two percent a year, basically, whatever it is. We give the the chamber sixty grand, basically, right now today. And then there's Visit Quad Cities, Visit Quad Cities is a this totally unique animal as well. Um, in the case of Visit Quad Cities, we contribute seventeen point eight five seven percent of the hotel hotel packs that is collected in this city for all of our room nights that take place, they're getting a. They're getting about, you know, a fraction below eighteen percent. We also funded lower than most, not all, but lower than most. Of the of the other Illinois and Iowa Quad Cities, terms of the revenues that they get. They've requested that we increase that to twenty five percent of the eighteen, that's an old request. Requesting, been going on and debated internally now, well over a year. So decision point, something has to have, if they have to have an answer. Because it's question of this sustainability, they operated that as a budget annual.
Exactly.
They don't talk to us. So. They have not done that yet.
They they are certainly invited and I serve on that board, so I can tell you it is a real deal.
It's a direct.
And we get a lot of. That's that from. They do. In the Mississippi Valley, um, girls, I'm sorry.
Missouri Valley Congress.
Missouri Valley Congress tournament, there's just one example of.
Right, I'm aware of what they do.
Right, but I'm talking about the, they can, well, we can invite them.
The council controls, that's why we're here, the council controls money. Yeah, they need to come and talk to us too.
I will be happy to invite David Arrow here, sure he would love to come and explain their, you know. Their situation and what what they're looking for, because it's not just us they're asking.
We haven't heard from the chamber, I gotta say. You know, we give them money, I'm not sure what they do for us. Your presentation. Later on, I'll write them.
They think of the information all the time. Let's just kind of wrap up. So basically in twenty twenty two, uh, we funded Visit Quad Cities at three hundred twenty six thousand six hundred twenty dollars. At twenty three, we budgeted three hundred twenty seven thousand, which is zero point one two percent increase. Now, even by during pandemic, they took in a lot less money. Because this is all based on room nights. Really much done as well, basically a tax of those rooms. So they struggled through pandemic and we didn't give them any ARPA money, so you know, they didn't ask, we didn't give them. Probably had asked, probably would have given, gave money to everybody else, right? But they didn't, so keep that in mind. So as we as we sit here now, um, you know, Renew Moline is is our is our development part. The equivalent of downtown, this downtown, that form of business, uh, cooperative with the chamber. Downtown, that door, uh, after or down, 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 which costs several hundred thousand. It's not free, it's not sixty thousand, maybe a hundred thousand for that. Do you want those exact figures? I will get those for you. So what's going on there? So Renew's made a request, you know, just gonna lay it out there, and they're looking for, uh, uh, increase in their, uh. Sustaining support, uh, by, I believe it was, actually, twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, they're also, as far as the Moline Center, uh. They're looking for not really an increase there, but they're looking for money that we already collect. That is a C E D budget, that that money would move over to them. That it would streamline operations, twenty five grand. It's basically for marketing, for the holiday hop, the marketing efforts. And that was held back when we actually solidated our operations during Europe. That's not a not an increase, but it's basically moving money there, they would manage it. And at the C D C, it was the more difficult challenge because obviously we're using ARPA link for that, there they're looking for, uh. Hundred twenty five thousand dollars, so. Part of that, part of that is. Maintaining the same funding level for personnel services, with basic salary benefits, it's only like one person. Um, and then additionally that. You know, they have these programmatic costs based on a strategic plan that C D C put together. That would go toward the neighborhood identification program, which is lacking. Something that they were focusing on, especially at what are some of the oldest parts of the city. The rest that they provided, they did their renovation. But that's kind of where, those are the requests, I know they're all here tonight. So. Lost the money, it's, it's. So, you know, we can do, we can go a couple different ways, uh, I don't think we're gonna go down the road expanding our role and relationship with the chamber. Anybody to do something, so. So we're gonna lay that out there on the table, so people can think about. Uh, Visit Quad Cities, you know, I would like to see us move to twenty five percent level. Because everybody else is submitting support, right, but the others are there. Why we're not, always muzzling, even I would sit in meetings at the table with all the other city managers here, the city administrators. So that request is out there, not my request, it's their request, but I I agree with it. Uh, to me, it gives a little bigger piece of the pie from all of these hotel nights, which they help create, they help generate. They're bringing events, just paying back to people who actually create the revenue in the first place. You know, and as far as as far as the request from, uh. Renew Moline or Moline Center themselves and the C D C, yeah, these are our organizations. We can choose to fund our organizations and support our organizations. Or we can entertain negotiations with the chamber, you know, and have chamber do it for them, because somebody has. We do need that development part here, it's helpful, it's better. You know, housing is a big issue, the C D C's about that, also downtown business association, uh, business partners downtown, you know. They're finally joining this relationship that's working out. They're starting to get a good feel for where we're going. You know, and as far as Renew, I mean, it's basically, so you know, if you don't know, it's basically. East end of town, west end of town, border to border, it's Rock Island, the waterfront, basically this whole. Moline, that is the perimeter of their area of responsibility. It's a big area, huge area, it was a big tip that was within, it's a big area. You know, they've been instrumental for years in trying to get things done. A lot of the projects that have happened here the last two years have been led literally by them. Building this now. So. Is that anything?
Questions from the council?
No, you get me.
I'll just.
No. I'm pushing on motion. Quite right, I cannot support it with the volume just five percent, but we've got here this this projected three hundred and twenty seven. With with that. I guess I'm asking how accurate you think that is based on, I mean, are we gonna see more hotel rooms from from before than we think in twenty twenty three? Do we have any projections on that? If that comes to like one point eight million.
Yeah, we just have a relief point and we just held that one month. If there are more, more than we pay. And.
Perfect. Keep in mind too, hotel rates have jumped here significantly, as they have everywhere else, so those room rates went up significantly. And then their occupancies have gone up dramatically. So they're way past pandemic times, they're actually functioning very, very well.
Just when I did the math, that's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference annually.
Yeah.
Which I mean, we just have to account for elsewhere in the budget, uh, but I guess. Uh, obviously, if and when we bring Airbnb, Hotel, taxi, that helps offset some of that.
We started collecting that.
So.
Did we did we not? To call it, thank you.
So that helps offset some of that, that price dip, so that's.
Yeah, there is an offset, you're right.
Not all of it, not a hundred and thirty thousand.
I don't know, but we would have found out.
Is it with the C D C, is there like a long term, uh, thought process of making it self sustainable or is there a model? Can you share anything about that? Or is it or the, I know some brand new. Thank you.
Yeah, first, I just wanna thank you for your confidence, but. You know, a year ago. So we've spent a year learning from each other and learning. And looking for ways to make all of us. So, um, Chanel's done a great job of identifying a little bit of a path with her, for our strategy. So we're not very good. I do think the other thing that's good about having all of us under work here is that we have a lot of relationships here. Thanks, incredible. I'm not sure we've ever needed to have that attention. So I think with Chanel there and with the context. We have our place and goodness, it's great for us that we are people. But people are creating a better path to, fortunately, for the C D C to learn. More sustainable funding. So we've been at it probably ten months now. Just. Absolutely part of the branding.
In the sheet that we have, and uh, names this. Seventy thousand or twenty four, I know the funding request.
Right.
Is that just something we need?
They're looking for, yeah, they were looking for. Seventy five, over twenty five thousand.
Well, I just was wondering if there was a reason, the other.
Because the memo came out while I was on vacation, it was at my desk, posted, and then I asked Carol for this sheet yesterday.
Maybe consider we add twenty five.
Yeah, true. I mean, the big issue here is is it's really an increase for Visit Quad Cities folks from eighty twenty five percent. No change to the chamber, they're not asking at all. And then talking about it, and then twenty five thousand new, shifting to twenty five thousand over to Moline Center. Of the C E D budget in a. The increase, what is it, Moline C D C. Which is fifty grand actually.
I can. So in the memo, it talks just about salary and operating costs or program costs. I think that it would be helpful if there was more of a break down. Because if you're if you're gonna see salary, there will be some kind of arson to what. What is, if if that work job we're in the city, personally, right? I don't know. I I don't know. What what is the, what is the program? I think the council Chanel, like, it's a very general line, so Chanel, you know, to, for, you know, salary and program costs are. I'm not quoting you currently, I apologize. Can you maybe describe more to us what the extra funding for M C B C values for?
Yeah, I think it's best, uh, but. So there's the, um, supporting us being able to have staff person, especially with this, there's all the. Costs associated with that, but also the space, so being able to. Services of ready Moline in that sense, there's of those type of. Having a physical, the access to the physical infrastructure. Um, and then there's the thriving stimulus program is for program costs, so I can. Try to give you more details of that.
So you're looking down, I think they're pretty patient with the thriving stimulus program that they probably have, but that. I think, I don't know if that's helpful for you all, but just sort of find there. So what we can basically take away from the two plus then is that this is actually the cost of M C B C. In previous years of M C B C, we're trying to do what they do, but way less. The only other thing I would point out, they had a person. Exactly, right, their costs were less because they had hard time, they're the director, but they also. Gonna do as many things, or move to a sustainable path of 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 a full time director.
That very certainly right. Somewhere in the neighborhood, sixty five.
Yeah, it was.
Something like that, so this is the full time person, or then with the office action function of. Then define a life working program. About launch aid program, how to actually.
Sure, and I would say the, uh, the city has supported the Moline to the C D C other days and the environment, but. It's in the past, there was the, um, donations of property, which the. Was a huge help certainly in the past, there was some money budgeted in previous budgets to support, um, very grant writers on our cap. Has a lot of the money that we had to do projects, take grants, so we're taking all of that now, I don't find the brands. Uh, you know, some of the properties are gonna start coming, going to the land base, so it's just been shifting us. Um, where we're asking for the maximum support that we can have. Someone kind of bringing all of those tasks, projects and land.
So do we have ideas of where this money is proven from, it's.
Um, currently, it it's unfunded, we could be arguing running, there is no ownership, arguing we need to do. So, I mean, we'd be looking at the general.
I'm hearing.
Does that mean that the list we were just looking at needs to be tweaked? In order to pay.
You can also pay for it on a franchise fees, you know, if the brand. Yeah, the franchise, you want to definitely use for anything. I'll wait for general.
Do you all have more questions?
Well, I guess that was my question is, if we pay for, uh. If we, so you think we're pathetic? Something from that big budget is gonna either have to go or we're gonna have to, but none of those are included in that. Big budget that we want, but the, we still are gonna do extra towards to figure this one out.
That's what you need, right? That's what everyone.
Well, I think that's good, because I mean, yeah, we're not adopting a budget. And what we're looking for is direction, you know, if there's more, if we move forward with that, that's supportive direction. There's no such more, if we stop and we go in a different direction currently, so.
Based on, especially, so Brian's comments, I think that council needs to understand more of what this capacity brings. I love that they actually are in downtown Moline and they.
Let's keep.
They let's keep them here, uh, but they certainly can describe more, um. And we got, we got, you know, information from. From all our folks that were renewing, well, that's that's helpful, I think, that way you get in. But there, so the question of this twenty five percent support needs to be figured out in the coming.
Yeah.
Needs with which we could suppose any support, then we get the support for the other things.
Would we be able to hear chamber at twelve?
Um.
You're on.
I know why, I mean, you saying that next week, did anybody?
They they would be happy to.
I think they'd be happy to come here, I think.
Actually, it it would be a good thing, the more in Visit Quad Cities.
We should probably have them on the same page, that's that's very even handed, um.
Cause we've already had.
Yeah, Renew's been here and in the past, I mean, until December, we're broadens. The money just flowed right through the budget, it was in there, this sale.
Oh, I'm seeing slash hearing consensus that we can stay open to the idea of supporting the thing, but we need more information.
We'll have Dave Arrow come in and maybe give the fighter, obviously, the latest annual report that he released.
Yeah, there's really good information.
So great report.
It explains a lot, yeah.
I I I agree, and I I think it would be beneficial for all of us to see the work that they're doing, even if it's not like Moline's strictly. But they've backed in in the overall region, you know, because both entities are doing. Some sort of things along the way. And then I said before.
I would say in the past, chamber and business, we were zero. Zero, they kind of give presentations. I haven't seen it in almost.
They come in quarterly right now, talking about, that children can develop, uh, communities and. You know, whatever leads they get, they reach out, that. They don't have a daily working relationship with them, they have to go to three services. Really don't, our daily working relationship, generally would. That's where it's at. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, uh, if, since we brought up ARPA dollars, would you please touch base on what you wanted to touch base on? If you're this side of.
We're very full, really fast and we really travel on like. We were, we were hoping to get some, uh, include in our next quarterly report. Some last page of your competing budget items, there's last two pages. Highlighting the ringers, like, six or seven little items on the bottom of the highlight. As you know, we had had a ones on page forty eight, that one, have everybody there? One stop shop. We originally had had two million dollars. We originally had had two million dollars in there, it's about a trickle-down, and we've gone in different directions. We've divvied it up to where now, we've only got the software that you approved, um, several weeks ago. So that money is in there, but it's a different number than what we had had before, that number of nine thousand. On the twenty-sixth, you're gonna have Rod give a presentation on the asphalt payment. So we took part of the one-stop shop money, and allocated it down to the asphalt payment instead. And then we had negotiated parking lease write-offs, Margaret and Bob have been negotiating. Two-to-two, it's been a little more than three hundred thousand of the write-off. We originally were gonna take that money and pay the general fund back for the week, for the lost revenue. But now, um, Bob was proposing consideration of taking that money, that three hundred thousand, that not, in that cell, that excess. And moving it down to help pay for, um, flooding, and mission is, for the Illinois ninety-two escape. And I, I might as well just talk about that right now, we had only had a million dollars in that creative infrastructure investments to reduce flooding. We had five hundred and five hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty-three, five hundred and twenty-four. We are now trying to increase it a million dollars. So that we're hitting this at the fifty-year blood mark, or it's just a projection that we think two million dollars might come close to hitting there.
Yes, the original plant, the original price tag is three point five million, we covered a, a one-hundred-year rate event. We're, uh, scaling that project back somewhat to cover a lesser, be a fifty-year debt.
But, so that's two million dollars, three hundred thousand coming from the negotiated parking lease write-offs up above. And then reducing the bikeway multimodal plan, we had a million five million, we cut it back to eight hundred thousand. Taking the seven hundred thousand from bikeways and creating a flood. And then we attached earlier, we go back up to the building security for city hall, all the works. That money right there is unallocated right now, that two forty-five entirely. We're pretty sad that would be a good way to pay for the security, you can, you can have that project right now, unrestricted. That's what we wanted to throw off, maybe one was the flood, excuse me, should rest it.
Sure.
That is directly related to us containing our industry, and, and, oh, you didn't say it before, and, and keeping those jobs here, I, I can't see why. Wouldn't want to feel that charged, but I hope it's.
Yeah, I, I know there was no, I mean, we're still seeking additional grant funding, and we'd love to have a chance to reallocate that, but I think, right.
And just as another thing, I don't know if I said this seriously, if I found it effective, but, um, early in August, we learned that that project was cut from the projects, um,
Congressional.
Congressional directed spending, it was one of three of four that our senator, uh, put over, that was cut. So this is the need for us to find that one. We tried though, kind of on for congressional, commercially direct spending.
Those, all, all cases were over FEMA, a little bit FEMA grants, first one we rejected, second one, most again, being, uh, home and security money. So, why we reduce the scope of rapid development. Okay, but I need a hundred years.
So is it safe to say that two forty-five for the building security, could also technically be a place people for the funding for, uh, our outside sources that need extra help?
In the unrestricted, um, yeah, only from the unrestricted.
That's helpful. Anything further?
Yes, going down to the restricted then, as you know, it had broadband installation. There was a million three that we plugged in that category. We were making the recommendation, very limited opportunity to spend it on anything. We were recommending consideration, slide it up in twenty-five into the water for strictly water projects. We would be adding two projects, you see. It's not built, it's a cash flow, we decided that this is an additional project.
That, is that all lead line that they stripped, or is that other?
They use for anything anymore.
Oh, I, I thought only certain, that water.
Has to be infrastructure.
Has to be infrastructure, there's, there's. Yeah.
And then the last one, um, is the childcare program, there appears to be afternoon paid for everything including western. A hundred and eighty-five thousand left in restricted, again, very limited opportunity extended. You could also slide that one up to water.
Or waste water.
Yeah, or raise water, but, let me see.
I guess I was, I'm looking at, uh, places to shift to redevelopment opportunities. We know we're gonna be having some costs coming in parcels of land, and is that where that redevelopment is being talked about?
That, um, this restrictive, uh, it really has to be. I mean, you could push it down like in the land base, that qualifies.
Is that what redevelopment opportunities on the sheets is, is that what I meant?
Yeah, people know land base is down low, but it has to help, directly help businesses, it can be for salaries, and it can very give yourself to.
So what does this line for redevelopment opportunities?
That is specifically going to some type of, of business, you don't have to.
So could it help with the parcels?
It might help with park. It might, as a redevelopment program. That's new development and redevelopment in a distressed area.
Yeah, but it has to be distressed, and it had to, where it took a hit on base.
Exploited, that's what it's called.
The business.
Yes.
I would make a motion to move the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, from twenty twenty-four childcare into redevelopment opportunity category. Rest of the money, part.
Is that their second?
Second.
Second by O'Brien. Session. Mary Lynn, that old paper.
Hi.
Those passes. Yes.
And two questions, so, on the previous motion, could this also be used for R C, uh, Moline Housing Authority and the distressed property, or trying to? We're discussing rehabilitating, is that considered?
It's all about the Moline, album of thorns.
Correct. And, uh, mail arts, building. Provide more for housing in the community.
It's a redevelopment opportunity.
It's a, it's a nonprofit, so they.
There's a free amount of compliance we have.
We'd have to check.
That you really showed that, through that money is going from.
It was not restricted, yeah.
Well, they can do that research and stuff, come back to it, but that's also, even though we may all support the idea, I mean, I didn't hear any negativity, probably moving that with rebuilding it over to water projects, we could also take it from there.
Take it from there, it's a big chunk of what's there.
There's, there's some room to blend with that, too, I mean.
And then, um, on the unrestricted, I had a conversation with Chief, so, last week, about the CYFS partnership, and he, it, it's the, the mental health partnership the police has with the community, they have write-alongs, they have, uh, they went from thirty-six, uh, referrals a year to nine hundred a year, that, that helping people receive services that are desperately. And he pointed out that the adult services have been way underfunded, and he did not anticipate this when he submitted the budget. And they've been pulling those sources from things like salaries for, uh, uh, mental health services and whatnot. Help give people food and temporary housing and whatnot, that are in the adult program. So I would like to make a motion, take fifty thousand from the bikeways project, for twenty-four allocated CYFS, second, adult program.
Pushed by Ten, seconded, uh, by O'Brien. Session. Bringing this up, it's helpful, and it's, I know something that you've been bringing up everywhere, where, for the last two years. Uh, any further discussion? You're done, all favor? Now, I hate to do this at this late, late hour, but I, I hope we're not missing something, or I have missed something, but the money provided, I thought parcels, we still have not found out what they're going to cost, and we don't have it in the budget, correct? This is something that KSK is going to include in their reports to us. Problem is the timing, you're supposed to tell us, those parcels are supposed to be out, like, by now, right?
They were, they were, they were in the process of delaying the parcel. People describing those parcels, and the state is moving at the state's pace. I have, I don't have any update, I would say few, of that, for the state.
The state's down two weeks ago, perhaps, in, on the release, just go over what happened. Certainly checked to see if they have a great location yet.
Yeah.
So, we s, could you maybe next time give us an update on how we plan to pay for any parcels?
We didn't have money set aside for land acquisition at one time, we like that.
We had a fun time, but not, not after we bought at a certain point.
Get other hand, maybe.
Yeah, so I just, just wanted to submit that in all of this.
Five hundred thousand, like that KSK, and there's still five hundred thousand there.
That's what I'm saying, is we can't have a glaring evening call, something that we need to pay for, that's right around the corner. So that's why we like to do this top for over a month, and figure out our budget. All right, anything further, staff on these items, or move to miscellaneous? All right, move into miscellaneous, I, you've had a great time today, and it's, um, the announcement of the press conference today. Your achievements, holding an inspiration center, wonderful collaboration, check it out in the news. And, uh, that's all we have right now. Wait, I put, I can just work again. Yes. I mean. That's.
You have the.
That's all.
Great vacation, thank you, you have a great day.
Thank you, I would say, session.
You are, in the plot.